Recording in progress.
Okay, Mayor and Council, we are live. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. And I'm proud to say this is the first time in a long time that I haven't had to apologize for a late start due to closed session. So if we can start with the calling of role.
Councilmember Cole.
Present.
Councilmember Hampton.
Blessed and honored to be here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Lyon.
Here.
Councilmember Madison is not yet in the room. Councilmember Masuda.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivas.
Here.
Mayor Gordo.
Here.
There's a quorum of the council present.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Lyon, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. Please rise as you're able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. We do have a couple of ceremonial matters. Let me start by welcoming our newly minted Pasadena police officers, together with the city manager and the city clerk and others and the chief. I had the opportunity to attend the swearing in. It's an impressive class of experienced and new officers to the profession, many of whom are from the area and including Pasadena. A number of them are made very good decisions early in life and attended Pasadena High School. And so I want to welcome all of them to Pasadena and the Pasadena Police Department and say, you know, you're now part of the best police department in the world, if not the universe. And so I'd also like to thank our command staff and the chief for bringing us a top notch class of police officers who I know will serve our city well. And so with that, let me introduce the chief who will and who will then introduce, make the introductions as necessary. Chief.
Mayor, just to let you know, right now, we don't have any audio going out on Zoom.
After I said all that, you tell me?
I'm sorry, sir. I just got the message.
No, no, this is what counts. People that are in here.
That was very good, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for being here this evening. There's never anything that makes certainly a police chief, but I'll speak on behalf of our entire command staff, more proud than being able to introduce folks that are coming in on the front end of their careers. It's awesome to watch the folks and their smiles, those of their families, as you saw at the swearing in. It makes us really good, feeling good and comfortable about what's going to happen in the future of this police department. So as you said, we are the best police department in the universe. So that we're going to let that stand. And tonight, you're going to meet the future of that universe. You're going to meet the folks that are going to set the tone for the very near and far into the future. Great group of people, great group of folks that are here to do the right thing and take care of the business of taking care of Pasadenaans. So with that, I'll introduce our PIO and Communication Specialist Suzanne Porus to make the actual introductions of the fine folks you're about to meet tonight.
Ms. Porus is also a Pasadena resident and long-term contributor to Pasadena who worked for Councilmember Kennedy. Ms. Porus?
Thank you, Chief Harris and Mayor Gordo, City Council. The Pasadena Police Department is proud to announce the swearing in of 16 outstanding new recruits. This milestone marks the beginning of a promising journey in public service. We commend everyone for their dedication, discipline, and perseverance that brought them to this moment. Their achievements thus far are just the first steps in what we know will be a career filled with growth, impact, and continued excellence, as they take the oath to serve and protect. We recognize not only their commitment, but also the unwavering support of their families, whose encouragement and sacrifice makes this service possible. We extend our heartfelt congratulations to these new officers and offer our deepest gratitude to them and their loved ones. Welcome to the Pasadena Police Department family. We look forward to the strength, integrity, and compassion you will bring to the community. Please welcome our newest officers. Officer Darlene Alvarenga. Officer Garrett Araki. Officer Haraj Asadurian. Officer David Calcanas. Officer Justin Cho. Officer Gina Garcia. Officer Kevin Wa. Officer Oscar Lopez. Officer Celine Machuca. Officer Juan Melin. Officer Angel Picon. Officer Pietro Piumetti. Officer Anthony Ponce. Officer Liza Robertson. Officer Robert Rodriguez. And Officer Valeria Rosas. Congratulations.
And you all have a great history and tradition, and we hope you, we know you will build on it. Officer Calcanas's uncle also was a Pasadena police officer. Anyone else have a relative that I think there was one other? No, with the previous class. But I went to high school with your uncle and watched him serve in Pasadena as a Pasadena police officer. So that's the tradition that all of you are now stepping into. We're a family. We're an important city and, you know, we're an important city because people like you work every day as the rest of the city rests to keep us safe. So thank you. Yes, as long as the officers are smiling. I mean, there we go. There we go. Welcome to the huge head family. There's three of us here.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations. And the first is for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month and United Against Hate Week. I'm going to invite Lola Osborne to come and introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to thank Coco Pinozian, our Director for the Department of Parks Recreation and Community Service for being here with us. And I'd like all of our youth to come on up. We are going to have Elliot Park introduce the bullying proclamation information, and then he will be followed by our immediate past chair Sandy Greenstein for the Human Relations Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Elliot Park. More than one out of every five students will be bullied this year, and chances are this is happening to someone you know and care about. Bullying directly affects a student's ability to learn. Students who are bullied often do not want to go to school. They might find it difficult to concentrate, show declining grades, and lose self-esteem, self-confidence, and self-worth. A focus on preventing bullying is important, as is promoting positive actions such as kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Students can be especially effective in bullying intervention. It's important for adults to encourage youth to be supportive of anyone experiencing bullying and to educate youth on how to advocate for themselves and for others. Silence is not an acceptable response to bullying. Ignoring it will not work. Everyone's actions matter. We all have a role to play in bullying prevention, and our message is stronger when we are united in saying that bullying is never acceptable. Thank you for listening.
Hello, Mayor Gordo and Council. Thank you so much. I'm Sandy Greenstein. Thank you for recognizing Pasadena as United Against Hate Week now in its fourth year. You have a poster on your desks and also two pieces of information. One of them is an invitation. We're honored to receive this proclamation during Anti-Bullying Month with these wonderful youth. Learning to address bullying is so important in overcoming hate. The City Human Relations Commission accepts the proclamation on behalf of our fellow planning team members. Western Justice Center, Day One, Stars, Collaborate Pasadena, Muslim Public Affairs Council, San Gabriel Valley Jewish Federation, Center for Restorative Justice, NAACP, Minoah Mobility Dogs, and more. We hope you will attend the October 23 event at Western Justice Center. See your invitation on your desk. And the Walk to Freedom Activity for Youth and Families on Saturday, October 25, starting at Day One. The website is listed. United Against Hate Week is widely recognized national, state, Los Angeles County, and local. Thank you so much.
Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations. Okay, we do have a couple of proclamations. And the first is for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month and United Against Hate Week. I'm going to invite Lola Osborne to come and introduce it.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to thank Coco Pinozian, our Director for the Department of Parks Recreation and Community Service for being here with us. And I'd like all of our youth to come on up. We are going to have Elliot Park introduce the bullying proclamation information, and then he will be followed by our immediate past chair Sandy Greenstein for the Human Relations Commission.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Elliot Park. More than one out of every five students will be bullied this year, and chances are this is happening to someone you know and care about. Bullying directly affects a student's ability to learn. Students who are bullied often do not want to go to school. They might find it difficult to concentrate, show declining grades, and lose self-esteem, self-confidence, and self-worth. A focus on preventing bullying is important, as is promoting positive actions such as kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. Students can be especially effective in bullying intervention. It's important for adults to encourage youth to be supportive of anyone experiencing bullying and to educate youth on how to advocate for themselves and for others. Silence is not an acceptable response to bullying. Ignoring it will not work. Everyone's actions matter. We all have a role to play in bullying prevention, and our message is stronger when we are united in saying that bullying is never acceptable. Thank you for listening.
Hello, Mayor Gordo and Council. Thank you so much. I'm Sandy Greenstein. Thank you for recognizing Pasadena as United Against Hate Week now in its fourth year. You have a poster on your desks and also two pieces of information. One of them is an invitation. We're honored to receive this proclamation during Anti-Bullying Month with these wonderful youth. Learning to address bullying is so important in overcoming hate. The City Human Relations Commission accepts the proclamation on behalf of our fellow planning team members. Western Justice Center, Day One, STARS, Collaborate Pasadena, Muslim Public Affairs Council, San Gabriel Valley Jewish Federation, Center for Restorative Justice, NAACP, Minoah Mobility Dogs, and more. We hope you will attend the October 23 event at Western Justice Center. See your invitation on your desk. And the Walk to Freedom Activity for Youth and Families on Saturday, October 25, starting at Day One. The website is listed. United Against Hate Week is widely recognized national, state, Los Angeles County, and local. Thank you so much.
Next, it's that time of the year for National Pedestrian Safety Month and Walktoberfest. And this is the opportunity to remind ourselves as pedestrians that it's important to pay attention. And as we're driving and circulating, it's important to pay attention. I think all of us have a responsibility to be safe pedestrians and safe drivers as people are working their way through the city on foot and on bicycles, for that matter. I am pleased tonight to proclaim the month of October 2025 in Pasadena as Walktober and Pedestrian Safety Month. And I would ask Joaquin Zikis, Colleen Bogart, and Liz Schiller to join me and come accept the proclamation.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Just want to say we're excited for Walktober this year. Just very quickly, I just want to introduce Colin Bogart, Active Transportation Director for Day One, and also Liz Schiller for Pasadena Complete Streets Coalition, who are great partners to stage all these exciting events.
Thank you, yeah, Mayor, Councilmembers. Once again, we're very excited for Walktober this year. As Scott mentioned, Colin Bogart, Active Transportation at Day One, Director, I mean. And just want to say that we're super excited about this year's lineup. We have 20 different events set up for Walktober this year. We've already had five just this past weekend that went extremely well, and we're looking forward to the rest for the rest of the month. Just real quick, want to remind people that if they want to look up information for the event, it's walktoberpasadena.org. And with that, I'll introduce Liz.
Thanks, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Liz Schiller from the Pasadena Complete Streets Coalition, longtime partner in and in fact, the originator of Pasadena's Walktober. One of the strengths of this eighth annual Walktober event was your two-year funding cycle. Thank you so much. It meant we could spend more time organizing the many events where both residents and visitors can enjoy and discover Pasadena's beauty and neighborhoods and art. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have some somber news, which, and two requests to adjourn in memory of. One you may have all heard about, and that's the passing of Dr. Jane Goodall, an anthropologist and pioneer in primate ethology, and really so much more than that. Someone who taught us to be peaceful and in peace with nature and towards other living beings. She was a British primologist and anthropologist, best known for her groundbreaking research on wild chimpanzees in Tanzania. Born on April 3, 1934, she began studying chimpanzees in the Gombe Stream National Park in 1960, revolutionizing and understanding of primate behavior. She was Grand Marshal in the Rose Parade in 2013 and served as the Grand Marshal of the 124th Tournament of Roses Parade themed "Oh Places You'll Go." Oh, the places you'll go, I apologize. A nod to her global impact and adventurous spirit. Many of you may have heard that she was scheduled to speak at the EF Academy here in Pasadena last week on October 1, 2025, to launch the TREES program, a student-led movement aiming to plant over 5,000 trees in a fire-raged area such as our community and also the Palisades. So she was here reminding us of the importance of nature and our surroundings and assisting this community and our neighbors in Altadena when she passed. And so I would ask that we adjourn in her memory and of course, offer condolences to her family, but also gratitude for her work, again, teaching us the importance of our surroundings, nature, and coexisting with other beings, including primates and animals. So on behalf of the City Council, I will send a letter consistent with that and ask that we adjourn in her memory. Mr. Madison?
Thank you, Mayor, and that's certainly appropriate. I was interested to learn on her passing that Jane Goodall's favorite animal was dogs, not chimpanzees. And she explained that chimpanzees were so human-like that, you know, sometimes you like people and sometimes you don't, and that that carried over to the chimps, but that the dog's love is always unconditional, as those of us who are dog owners know. But thank you, and thank you for calling on me, Mayor, because we lost another longtime resident and resident of West Pasadena. Sidney Dale Kirkpatrick III was a New York Times bestselling author who passed away just recently after a lengthy illness. He passed on September 24. He was raised and educated in the East, became an author and filmmaker, produced and directed a documentary about Theodore Roosevelt, authored numerous bestselling books, some of which were made into films in Hollywood. His wife, now his widow, is also a filmmaker and author. And I think what's most notable for this group is that in the early 90s, he was one of the key people who rose to the challenge of saving Pasadena's libraries. There was the first library parcel tax campaign in 1993, and Sidney, along with the others, was instrumental in getting that enacted by a two-thirds majority, as this council well knows, because we've extended that parcel tax several times. But it all started with Sidney, who was an author and book lover himself, was passionate about it. He really had a dramatic flair as well. Some of the old guard, Councilmember Cole may remember these things in the 90s, that he organized one political rally at the Central Library, and he had a horse-drawn buggy with a casket in the back, and books were inside the casket. And it was an open casket, so everyone could see that if we didn't fund our libraries, it could mean, you know, the death of books and of reading. And then sort of a macabre theme, but he also organized readings at the Pasadena Central Library where actors would portray late authors from, you know, throughout history, reading famous works of literature that they had authored and talking about them. And that was very successful. In fact, the proceeds of that were used to install the library's computer learning center, which is so critical to kids that don't have those resources at home. So a service will be held for Sidney Kirkpatrick on Saturday, November 15, at All Saints. And I respectfully ask my colleagues, Mayor, and yourself, to adjourn in his memory as well.
Thank you. And we will do so and again, send a letter to his family and acknowledge.
Thank you, Mayor. We have that information.
Thank you. Okay, with that, the council will adjourn in memory of Mr. Kirkpatrick, Sidney Kirkpatrick, and also Dr. Jane Goodall. Now we can move on to the agenda and starting with comments for matters not on the agenda. We do have agenda matters, including a very important matter to consider in the way of transportation. So, Mr. Clerk?
Minute and a half.
Okay, minute and a half.
Meg Rumsey-Laserson, followed by Zain Khalife, followed by Humira Absal, then Olden Denham. If you've heard your name, please come forward. Meg?
If you've heard your name, could you please line up in the center aisle after?
As you hear your name called, please.
Zain Khalife will be next.
Form a line in the center aisle. Thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Meg Rumsey-Lasserson. I am a Pasadena resident and voter, and I believe that you all ran for office because you care about the people of Pasadena. So I would like you to imagine that at this moment, every single one of Pasadena's almost 140,000 residents had been injured in an ongoing assault on the city. That the people facing amputations or spinal cord injuries were enough to fill every single bed at Huntington Hospital. That every single child of the 14,000 in the Pasadena Unified School District had been killed. These numbers are directly from Gaza. Now imagine that you could speak to the city council of another city, a city that stood for integrity and accountability and had taken a stand against mass violence many times in the past. And imagine that they were supporting their beautiful city with money made from the weapons that killed Pasadena's children, that destroyed the schools and newspapers and clinics. Would you ask that city council to give up those investments? I know that you would. You would do everything in your power to help us. Because we know what you would do for us, we are asking that you do this for the people of Gaza and the West Bank now. Everyone here is the same as the families in Palestine. We are just blessed to be safe tonight. A resolution for divestment has been submitted to be agendized to this council. You can ensure that Pasadena continues to stand for human rights in more than just words.
Thank you.
You can make our city proud.
Please, please, if we call your name, please form a line in the center aisle. Please, please, if we call your name, please form a line in the center aisle.
Zain Khalife? No? Humira Afzal, followed by Olden Denham, then Alan Shea, then Michael Warren, then James Maddox?
Hi, I'm Humira Afzal, and I'm a brand-new Pasadena resident. Public pension funds are intended to provide retirement security for employees in retirement. You can do that without investing in companies or industries that cause harm to people or destroy the world that we live in and that our children and grandchildren will inherit. I commend Councilman Hampton for having the moral clarity to say that we shouldn't be investing in any companies that we know have been benefiting off of the harm of human beings. It's exceedingly disappointed that others didn't immediately support it. Apparently genocide is not a red line. Even if you don't have a moral compass that tells you that profiting from genocide is repugnant, you should be concerned about the financial worthiness of investing in these companies. International boycotts have negatively affected the returns of a number of genocide profiteers. Some are just bad investments. Divesting from Chevron, for example, will not negatively impact returns. 14 major public pension funds collectively invest over $80 billion in oil, gas, and coal. The fossil fuel industry underperformed compared to the rest of the market. If the funds had divested 10 years ago, they would have another $17 to $21 billion in their funds. Let's take another angle. How would you justify investing in a company profiting from genocide to a Pasadena resident who has lost dozens of family members to Israeli bombs and snipers in Gaza? How do you justify supporting companies that profit from pain and suffering? Should it be so hard for this body to publicly affirm that it is opposed to...
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
You got the point.
Olden Denham, followed by Alan Shea, then Michael Warner, then James Maddox, then Rebecca Husani?
Again, form a line if you heard your name, please.
Anyway, and I'm not going to try and pretend that I'm going to come up here and explain myself over again, but I am going to request an opportunity to show you what I have here on the essentials on this case that we've been dealing with for the last five years. And the three things that were brought out by our city attorneys was the fact that there had to be established opportunity, ability, and intent. Those three things weren't met because his intent, anybody here can obviously know what his intent was. His intent was to get away. His intent was not to harm anyone. And the other two things that have to be established is imminent, the one thing, really, imminent danger for that officer or someone else at that immediate time, not later on, but at that immediate time, if that wasn't there. So I'm requesting an opportunity to show you what I have from your own, from your own evidence, from your, from the cameras, and from the way the report was written. The way the report was written out, it was not consistent with the law. It was consistent with police policy. And policy and law don't go together, and I want to be able to show this gathering that. So give me the opportunity, reopen that health and safety meeting, and let me show you what I know to be the truth. That's the only weapon I have is the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Denham.
Thank you. Alan Shea, followed by Michael Warren.
Warner.
Warner, sorry.
Mr. Shea?
Alan Shea, coming before this city council to once again read directly from your own policies. Key function and purpose. Key function and purpose. That's what it's asking you as the leaders, elected officials, to do when it comes to the Oversight Committee. The Oversight Committee is responsible to bring about accountability and their position as an Oversight Commission as it relates to the police. There is no way this is ever going to have any kind of traction unless this council give the power to the Oversight Commission to do that. And if that does not happen, you may as well disband the Oversight Commission, because we're going to keep running into this. And if the essence of what this Oversight Commission was created on does not stand to be reconciled, because clearly the law was in place. City attorneys showed that, that the law had not been applied in the Anthony McLean's case. Anthony McLean was murdered, and again, we have come before you as the city council to act responsible, because the Oversight Commission policy demands that you do that, along with the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Shea.
Mr. Shea, your time has expired. Michael Warner, followed by James Maddox, then Rebecca Husani, then Jennifer Vaughn.
Mr. Warner, welcome.
Nate's going to talk to Steve.
Oh, okay. Well, Mr. Warner, you're recognized, so...
I know. I'm the only one that filled out a card.
Well...
The rest of them didn't fill out a card, so Nate's going to talk.
I did.
Nat Nadar?
Nat Nadar.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gordo, council members.
Mr. Warner, so you're waiving your time?
I'm giving it to Nate.
Okay, well, so we'll recognize you, given you're speaking on...
Thank you. I apologize. I thought that I was going to fill out a card, but...
But Nat, if you'll fill out a card afterwards.
Thank you for understanding. Once again, good evening, Mayor Gordo, council members. It's my pleasure to be here with a number of my team members behind me to bring you up to date about PIA, Pasadena International Association. It's now officially incorporated as a nonprofit entity based in Pasadena. For the past nearly two years, our members have been actively managing relationships with four of the Pasadena Sister City, Mishima, Japan, Luton Haven, Germany, Vanosor, Armenia, and Xicheng, Beijing, China. PIA currently has a membership of 31 paid and active members, many with deep longstanding relationships with the members of the international organization in Germany, Japan, China, Armenia. Kathy Wei with China for the past 25 years, Brian Taketa, Vice President, with Mishima for more than 20 years, Bob Nymac with Germany for more than five years, and Ms. Jahlian with Armenia for 15 years. These organizations have agreed to engage with PIA in the continuation of the sister city relationship that had been active since 1948. We therefore wish to be recognized as the official organization that maintains the sister city relationship with these four countries. This summer, PIA sent 10 students to Mishima for...
Your time has expired.
You can submit your comments, and they'll be distributed, but...
I'm sorry?
We want to be fair to everyone.
Okay. Well, I apologize. Well, I want to say in conclusion, we need your assistance to assist us and work with us, if you'd be so kind. And in conclusion, I need to say this very important. If you all remember, former President Eisenhower once said...
I want to be fair to everyone. If you'll submit your comments...
You can just give it to the sergeant, and we'll distribute it.
We'll distribute your comments.
Come back again?
No, we'll distribute the...
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah. Or you can wait till after the meeting, and you'll be granted more, after the agenda, and you'll be granted more.
Okay, we'll come back. It can officially. Thank you, Mayor Gordo.
James Maddox?
At the conclusion, anyone who wants more than...
James Maddox, sir? James Maddox is behind you.
Anyone who wants more information, including Mr. Nadar, is welcome to stay at the, for the end of the agenda, and we will grant you more time. But we just want to be fair to everyone at the beginning.
Followed by Rebecca Husani.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before I start, how much time do we have? Because we're good with pulling out the...
A minute and a half.
A minute and a half. Okay, so I know where I can start here on my presentation. Last week, I was here presenting about the Veterans Day event next on the 11th, and I will pick up where I left off. We are asking that the district newsletters, the districts that you advise your newsletters, and help the publicize the event of the to your constituents. Guests of all ages can enjoy free hot dogs, exhibits, and activities. One of the members of the committee wrote the following. "The Yellow Ribbon Ceremony," and that's the yellow ribbon over there. "Officially, welcome home, welcome home, our local Marine Battalion serves to emphasize the importance of Veterans Day, a historic celebration. It is not just these dates in the past, but rather the continuance in the present." Our keynote speaker, Associate Justice Eileen Moore, represents the living connection as well. Many years ago, it was noted quite frequently that but for the women of the American Revolution, the battle could not have been waged or won. The Pasadena Veterans Committee is sponsored by the Parks and Recreation, the Rose Bowl Management Association, American Legion Chapters Post 13 and 280, Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter 446, and the Martin Severance Chapter of the American Revolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison.
Rebecca Husani?
I apologize, counsel. My name had been called while I was with security. Would it be permissible for me to...
You'll identify yourself for the record.
Yeah. Zain Khalife.
Ah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Thank you for having me. You know, just to introduce myself to the council and the community, I am a local physician. I take care of many of your neighbors, your loved ones and family members, possibly even yourselves. And I'm here to address you on the topic of divestment. Now, to begin, I'd like to reference one of my colleagues. It's Dr. Hamam Alloh. He was a physician in Gaza, and as his hospital was being bombed, he did an interview where he was asked, "Why are you not evacuating?" And his response was that, "If I go, who treats my patients? You think I went to medical school for 14 years so I can only think about my life and not my patients? I'm asking you, ma'am, do you think the reason I went to medical school was to only think about my life? That's not the reason I became a doctor." He was killed in a targeted airstrike, not on the hospital, but on his home, one week later. The hospital was then raided later that month. So in honor of his memory and the hundreds of other healthcare workers lost, I'm here not just in obligation to Dr. Alloh, but also to the patients that I serve day in and day out, who I'm told we don't have the resources to care for, that we can't afford to give them the high-quality care that they deserve, and I see how their health outcomes suffer, so that we cannot fund our own healthcare systems, but fund the genocide and extermination of healthcare workers, patients, and residents of Palestine. And it's our obligation, not just to them, but to the people we love who deserve quality care here, that we keep our money taking care of our loved ones and that we remove it from...
Sorry, your time has expired.
...complicity in genocide.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you for having me.
Rebecca Husani, followed by Jennifer Vaughn, followed by Hidab, then Patricia.
Mayor Gordo, members of the city council, thank you for having me here today. I'm Rebecca Husani with the Muslim Public Affairs Council. I'm here on another matter regarding the proclamation. I want to thank you all for taking this first important initiative and showing leadership as you affirm these values for our community, and we look forward to seeing you support those that are standing for justice, safety, and security for all people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Vaughn, then Hidab, then Patricia, then Rita Capadia, then Katie, sorry, then Renee Gonzalez, then Katie.
Welcome, ma'am.
The Palestinians in Gaza are getting bombed daily. They're suffering immensely. The United Nations has declared it's intended genocide. They lack the basic needs that people need to survive. They're starving every day. Most of them have lost their families. Abdul Omar has lost his entire family except for his grandmother. He's 23 years old, and he lost his wife and two children in an Israeli bombing. This is happening every day. Their suffering is detrimental and inhumane. It's a severe crime against humanity. This is a humanity issue. It calls upon all of us to stand up and say enough is enough and to stop the genocide that's going on. So we come forward, and we just bring this awareness, because there's so much cover-up and denial about the suffering. So we ask you to agendize the resolution submitted by Councilmember Hampton. Thank you.
Hidab, followed by Patricia, then Rita Capadia, then Renee, and then Katie.
Ma'am. Greetings with peace, everyone. Last week, I sat, and I did not want to speak. Even today, I did not want to speak, but I felt I have to. I don't know how many family members that I still have to lose to this genocide, so that you would put it on the agenda. Six-year-old Khalil, with his mother, Dikra, were killed last week. If I am to hold a memorial service for every member of my family killed in the genocide, it would take a whole year to honor them. I want to know how many times this body of people from the city would have to come and ask you to put it on the agenda for it to happen. Really, I want to know. Is there a policy to ignore us while you go visit Israel? Is there a policy to ignore us and ignore your humanity? We are asking. We're demanding. We're pleading. I am pleading with all of you. So if you think it is easy for me to come and bear my soul and bear my heart and share with you the pain that I have for all the family members that I keep losing, what does it take? What does it take, Mayor, to put it on the agenda? What? I hope you do, because I am tired for them, but I'm not tired to be the voice of the people of Gaza. I am not tired to stand up for the people who have no voice...
Ma'am, your time has expired.
...and need me to keep reminding you, be human. Put it on the agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
Patricia, followed by Rita Capadia, followed by Renee Gonzalez, then Katie.
Rita Capadia. I'm a first-time speaker and speaking as a Pasadena resident.
Not Patricia?
No, I needed a minute.
Okay, sorry, go ahead. No problem.
Speaking as a Pasadena resident, to end the genocide in Palestine, we need to end all forms of complicity, including divesting from companies that support Israel. I want to share a story. 12-year-old Rahaf Ayad is so malnutritioned, she can barely speak. Her hair is falling out, her ribs protrude. Rahaf was recently evacuated to the UAE to receive treatment for severe malnutrition. There are still thousands upon thousands of children who are injured or with cancer or suffering from severe malnutrition due to Israel's blockade on Gaza, while thousands of humanitarian aid trucks are sitting at the border. If you may, please take a look at this before and after picture. 9-year-old Miriam DeWasse from Gaza suffers from severe malnutrition and can no longer walk. Miriam lives in a displacement shelter where she has endured months of hunger, diarrhea, and muscle wasting. Before the war, she weighed 55 pounds. Today, she weighs just 19 pounds.
Ma'am, welcome.
Good evening. You may not have heard that on Wednesday, Israel captured and imprisoned 500 humanitarians from 44 countries who had set sail on 50 flotillas to break the siege on Gaza and to deliver aid to the starving people. Their ships carried baby formula, rice, toys, and medicine. They did not carry any weapons whatsoever and were not a threat to Israel, yet they were imprisoned and abused. Among the people on board were Greta Thunberg, the famous climate activist, and the grandson of Nelson Mandela. In the past few days, dozens of countries around the world protested. Citizens in Amsterdam, Istanbul, Portugal, Australia, Canada, and Scotland protested in the hundreds of thousands. But most notably, over 1 million people in Italy shut down their country, and yet not a single Western media outlet spoke about it. 100 cities in Italy went on strike, shutting down train stations, ports, and blocking to protest their government's complicity in genocide. The world is rising up for Gaza, and we too are asking the city of Pasadena to divest from companies complicit in genocide. It is time to please agendize. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Gonzalez, and then Katie.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Both are virtual.
Oh, Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Can you guys hear me, Greta?
We can. Ring a bell when you have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone, mayor, vice mayor, city council members. I would like to suggest that a closed-session meeting be scheduled before the Wana Huato item comes back, and we all stay away from publicly embarrassing the people-to-people program in Pasadena. Keep the attorney tactics in the court. Take a deep breath and help us unite everyone as one Pasadena. Together, we will stand. Divided, we will surely fall. Any comment about divisionness, that the majority of the Mexican people is from Zacatecas, is toxic. Any comment about the white flight from Pasadena Sister City, not only unfair, but it creates... Any comment about the white flight from Pasadena Sister City, not only unfair, but it creates same... I was gonna say a bad word, but the same stuff that is being created in the federal government. We do expect everyone involved, including our mayor, Pasadena president, and the other Sister City committee that is there present, state representatives from Sister City International, Mexico Sister City representatives, to get information from the source, not the Pasadena Sister City president, because there seems to be a conflict of interest. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to sit everyone in on the table.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Hi, I have a comment on two agenda items and a general public comment. Do I do that all now?
No, you'll just do the general public comment, and then I'll call you when it's the two agenda items.
Okay, I'll try to be quick because it's all related. I first want to just honor Carlos Roberto Montoya Valdez. You spoke earlier about honoring, you know, some folks who were killed, and he was recently murdered by ICE just over in Monrovia. I also want to honor Anthony McLean, who was murdered, also murdered by safe-stationed violence, who we heard about earlier today, and both were racially profiled by the very people you had us sit through your honoring of tonight, and it's really disgusting. Why does the Pasadena police have a Bearcat? Why does the Pasadena police have all this militarized equipment, license plate readers, helicopters, drones, command centers? And what is the collaboration with ICE? Because we have seen it. There's video of Pasadena police working with federal agents in August. So I want to know what's going on there, why you're saying they're not collaborating when they are, and why these military vehicles and these things that you have said on the agenda are not going to directly harm the environment, which I would argue against because it's directly harming my neighbors like Anthony McLean, like those targeted vendors in Villa Park, people kidnapped from their homes on Marengo as well by ICE. So I'm just curious, what is the collaboration? And I need some transparency there. Also, it's a disgrace that you're going to terminate the public health disaster...
Your time is expired. You can speak on that when that item comes up.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
That completes public comment on matters not on the agenda.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are... The consent calendar is used to conduct the city's business on matters that have worked their way through committees and are determined to be appropriate for the consent calendar. Is there... And we are pulling two matters from the consent calendar. No? Okay. I apologize.
Mayor, can we pull three C's so I can recuse myself?
Which one?
Three C's. It's just setting for the Northlake specific plan. I have to recuse myself on all those matters.
Okay. Do you want to state? I think you...
Sure, I own property within five hundred feet of the plant. Thank you, mayor.
And with that...
Mayor, I don't think we identified the two that you referred to.
I was mistaken. It was just...
They're not being pulled off the agenda. So a sweep motion would cover items one, two, three A, and three B, and then we would do three C.
So, so everything but three C.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll move those items.
They're moved and seconded. Are there any objections?
Wait, I didn't hear a second.
Mr. Lyon.
No, Mr. Lyon. Oh, sorry, you made the most...
I'll second.
Yeah, Mr. Lyon's seconded.
Sorry, I apologize.
Oh, wait. Mr. Lyon's moving.
Okay, either way, one of us is doing one.
Come on, keep it straight, guys.
I got it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second now. Are there any objections? Okay, seen none. That's approved, and we'll allow Ms. Rivas to momentarily step out of the room, consistent with state law.
Move three. Move three C.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Madison, seconded by Mr. Lyon to move three C. Are there any objections? Seen none. That matter's approved, and Ms. Rivas can step back in.
Thank you, Mitch.
Been watching a lot of baseball.
I did, I wasn't watching anything since the...
Okay.
This was fifty-four out, and six fifty-five.
Okay. Next, that brings us to items six...
No.
No? I'm sorry.
Item four.
Item four, thank you. Item four is, I'll turn it over to the city manager to introduce, but it's a matter that went through the Public Safety Committee and received unanimous approval. Mr. City Manager, did you...
Thank you, mayor.
Do we need a presentation? We do it every year to comply with state law. Are there any speaker cards?
We do have two speaker cards on item four.
Do we need a full presentation? No? Okay. So why don't we just turn to the speaker cards?
Is Yadi in the meeting? Yadi, are you here? No?
I don't see her.
I don't see her either, so let's bring back Katie.
Oh, yeah, hi. That was fast. How long do I have?
A minute and a half. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, two minutes.
Sorry, sorry, two minutes.
These are agendized matters, so we will provide two minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, so the number four agendized item, just going back to that, it notes in the agenda that the proposed actions related to this land use don't result in any direct or indirect changes in the environment. And like I was mentioning, I would argue that that will have severe and direct impacts on the community to continue to increase these military police budgets. I don't know why there's a need for them, and I'm also curious how that relates, again, to the collaboration with ICE, and also that there's a training facility for the Pasadena police, which seems to be intimidating the day laborers and the community at the Home Depot in Pasadena. So it just seems like as a council would hopefully care about their community and just take things like that into effect, into consideration, rather. And for the other agenda item of adopting a resolution to terminate the local public health emergency...
That's item five, ma'am. We're gonna get to that next, so we'll call you back in for that. Hold on one second. Yadi, I hear, is back in the meeting, so she's online.
Yadi, welcome.
Yadi?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, really quickly to reiterate what I said at Public Safety, this year's military equipment report gave a massive, got a massive glow up, showing considerable effort and consideration for the input given by the community in prior years. The report shows that the police use drones on very few occasions, and I was hopeful that perhaps SWAT didn't find them that useful, but alas, that doesn't appear to be the case as the police indicates in the report that it'll be seeking replacement drones. You already know my privacy, security, and scope creep concerns with the use of drones. The national security concerns specifically stem from the use of DJI vendors and other manufacturers tied with CCP. To meet the moment, many federal agencies have acted, such as the U.S. Commerce Department blacklisting DJI in 2017, the U.S. Department of Interior grounding DJI fleet in 2019, the Department of Defense excluding DJI from their approved blue drone list, the U.S. General Service Administration saying that they would only use blue-list-approved drones in 2021, the Pentagon blacklisting DJI in 2022, and some law enforcement agencies across the country like the D.C. Capitol Police foregoing DJI drones because they're a threat to national security. And also, the California Police Chief Association, which our police chief is a director of, also acknowledges these privacy and security concerns and sponsored a bill this year, AB 1160, to work on mitigating the issues. Given those realities and the current political climate, it's likely there will be further drone reform attempts. So I just have to say at the end that I have extremely high confidence that the Pasadena Police Department will not jeopardize security for the sake of cheap throwaway DJI drones or other drones with ties to foreign adversaries, especially with the important infrastructure that we have in Pasadena that we don't want to be targets as a national security risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Yadi.
That completes public comment on this agenda item.
So is there a motion? Mr. Masuda?
Yes, mayor, I'll move item number four.
Second.
Moving second, then Ms. Rivas?
I have a couple quick questions, if I may, for the department. Nothing tuned up. Again, this is the fourth year, I believe, we've gone through this. My only, my main question was, what was the input from the Community Police Oversight Commission? The staff report noted it went through there, it went through the other community event, and it also went through public safety, so it got a lot of eyes on it, but it didn't note what the commission's contribution or input was. What was their feedback? And again, they've seen it. This is their fourth time seeing it as well.
Yeah. Thank you very much, and good evening. There wasn't much that came out of either the community meeting or the public, the presentation to CPOC. There was a recognition of the information that was in there. There were some questions about whether or not the department actually possessed equipment that was designed for use by the military, which we do not. And then there was a question that came outside of the scope of the presentation in regards to the 50-caliber sniper rifle, but that question was actually answered during the presentation, so the individual was just acknowledging that the report answered the information they were seeking. And then, as far as the community presentation went, the media that was present had the same inquiry regarding the military language, which is really just a statutory term used by the law that we have adopted, whereas other agencies have changed from military equipment to call it specialized equipment or some other variation of that. We haven't done that.
Thank you. I appreciate that overview. I don't have any further questions, just to... Oh, go ahead, mayor.
Well, just, I'm sorry.
I have a comment, but if you want to jump in right now, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Just on the 50-cal, the first several years this came up, I argued that we excluded. I think it is a weapon of war. I served in the military. I've been around 50-cal's. They are serious weapons, and I understand we have one when our officers are well-trained to use them. So I don't want to relitigate that issue again. I think we had it several times already. But I did just want to point out that the purpose of the 50-cal rifle in our policy or in the list of items is to, basically for vehicles, to stop armored vehicles, to stop a vehicle, and I know it's deployed during the Rose Parade, to, in the horrific scenario of someone, that someone has a vehicle, to be able to incapacitate a vehicle, even if it is armored. So I understand that. I would love to see, though, our authorized use expressly state that that is the only use, that it's the only reason it should be used, so that it's not used directly on individuals, which would be a truly horrific thing to do. I argued for that years ago, didn't get anywhere, but I wanted to raise that issue again. I think that would be an important policy limitation to put on this weapon, which I understand has its time and place for those situations where there is a vehicle that needs to be stopped. And so I would argue that our policy should limit it to that specifically, but I'd love to hear everyone else's comments if there are any other questions or concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Cole, followed by Mr. Hampton. Let me just say quickly that, you know, particularly as we move into Olympics preparation and some would say even World Cup next year, it's important to ensure that our police department has the equipment it believes necessary to keep residents and visitors to Pasadena safe. Mr. Cole?
In that same spirit, mayor, I'm concerned we live now in an era of increasing pace and frequency of peaceful demonstrations that are happening in our community, that are happening in surrounding communities, and are happening around the country. And in reading the reports that have been done year after year at LAPD about how to address those kind of circumstances, the same mistakes keep getting made by LAPD over and over again, and the result is multimillion-dollar payments that are straining the Los Angeles budget. We have been fortunate in Pasadena. I have been impressed with the tactics used by our police department in response to peaceful demonstrations, and I want to see that continue. There's extensive documentation in here about training, about use of these weapons. My hope is that there will be extensive training about how to de-escalate and to avoid using these unless absolutely necessary. I know from personal experience that the tactics of the LAPD in recent times actually fomented some of the disturbances because of short-sighted tactics. So that's just a personal comment. We're not reviewing that tonight, but I do hope that we will take that into consideration because I think when we look ahead, there will be very likely situations where the cool heads of our Pasadena Police Department and the effective tactics will be put to the test, and I hope that we will pass that test.
Yeah, if I can just say thank you for the comment, Councilmember Cole. And de-escalation is a part of all the training that we do within the police department, not just in the use of our, you know, specialized SWAT equipment or whatnot, but the training that we provide in our firearms instruction or defensive tactics instruction. That is a critical component that I think the department recognizes, that, as you said, is recognized in our response to several of these critical incidents over the past that have come out. And so that is something we will continue to do in the discussions that we will continue to have. One thing I can point to in the report was that we did an audit and conducted audit of our chemical munitions, and we removed several of the munitions that would be considered that we would not deploy in a crowd-control situation because of the fact that they may not be, they may be indiscriminate as to how they would impact the public. So we've taken those out to phase them out of our program, to remove them, and to not, you know, deploy them in any crowd-control situation.
That's obviously reassuring. And again, frequently, anger gets directed at law enforcement because you find yourself in the middle, right? People are angry about or protesting something else, and then the way in which you seek to protect life and property can become the issue, and that's always unfortunate. And so wherever we can, trying to keep, respect people's First Amendment rights while protecting life and property in our community, it can be a very delicate balance. And again, my hope is that we will stress training and really reemphasize that as we look forward. The second I agree with, or I'm following up on the vice mayor's comments, about process for the moment. On the agenda for the September meeting of the Police Oversight Commission, this was presented as a presentation. Just as we have spoken here about information items, I think that as a general practice, if there are recommendations, we would like to hear them. They are advisory to us, all of our commissions, and so I would hope that we would agendize these things, not just for information only, but to invite the comments to us and to you in future years. I think this is important, and it's a procedural. I don't know enough about the issue of 50-caliber rifles to know whether I wouldn't want to join, whether I would want to join Vice Mayor in expressing her concerns about the policy, but I think, again, that's something that could be discussed by our Police Oversight Commission with recommendations to us.
Okay.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. I'm going to go off of Vice Mayor and Councilmember Cole's recommendation, and I was gonna ask the question, but I think Councilmember Cole kind of alluded to it. So this wasn't voted on as a receiving file from the CPOC? So this is such a, you know, a big item that we see now. This is our third year seeing this? Or is this...
Yes.
Oh, fourth year. Oh, this is our fourth year seeing this. Okay, thank you. That our CPOC should weigh in, and they should vote to receive and file with a recommendation to the council. I didn't see that in the staff report. I think I asked it the last, the last time this came to us, and so I hope moving forward, we can put it as an item for them to receive and file. At least we know their thoughts on it.
It's my understanding that there is either a procedural or legal requirement that, or issue there that prevents or precludes them from voting on this and that it has to go through public safety. And so in this manner, it was the community presentation that we put on. There was no... And so in this manner, it was the community presentation that we put on, there was no requirement to deliver this to CPOC. We did that, again, as transparency to get feedback. We were going to public safety prior to council, and so it was just an extra added step that we actually did to get feedback, to hear if there was any issues, so that we could build upon that like we did last year, when the comments and, and concerns came forward from the previous report, to make the changes to the report this year.
And then I guess maybe I'll look at the city attorney, and maybe we could figure out a way to have the CPOC weigh in more, more in-depth, that it's in the staff, the staff write-up, so that we know. I mean, I know that it went there because it says it, but it doesn't really say, unless I go to that meeting and watch the meeting.
So, in the future, more information in the actual staff report that comes to the council about what was discussed. I understa, I was not at the meeting, but the staff representative has indicated that there were questions that were answered specifically mostly about helicopters, but the commission seemed to be pleased with the presentation and the information that was provided.
So if there's any way to, you know, put that in a, in the staff report, that would be helpful.
Right.
Or even have a letter from the Chair of the CPOC saying that we received the presentation, here go our questions, and that'd be part of the staff presentation moving forward. Outside of that, I'd like to make a motion to move approval of staff recommendations.
We actually have a motion in a second.
Okay, that's good to know, I didn't hear that.
And the, the, well, first, we all know who you are, Lieutenant Russo, but I think we need to put that in the record. Did you want to state?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Lieutenant Russo.
Lieutenant Anthony Russo, the Pasadena Police Department.
That's for the record. And we also have Chair of the CPOC, Espree Jones, here with us today, who's listening intently, but let, let me just give a little bit of context. One, when we created the CPOC, the council was attempting to strike a balance between transparency and opportunity for non-elected residents to see information as it wound its weight to the council. Balance that against, you know, the need for the police department to have autonomy in its management and decision-making, including the Chief and the command staff. And so intentionally, my recollection, and I'm prepared to be corrected, but intentionally the council separated those two issues and said, you know, for decision-making on equipment and other policy, it's, it's appropriate to present the information to the CPOC for transparency purposes and for the public. But the ultimate decision should be within the elected officials in the police department. The second thing I'd point out is the statute is very clear, the state statute that mandates our annual approval, and it makes it very clear that it's the governing body of the council who makes the decision. And, you know, the, 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 what we're doing today, this agenda item doesn't, my understanding, does not add any new weapons. It certainly, it's, it's, we're complying with the statute that says on an annual basis, we are certifying that our program complies with state law. We provide a list of the weapons or equipment that we acquire from the federal government, and we make them known to the public. And that's all we're doing today is, we're not accepting, in my understanding, is new equipment. We're simply, we're certifying, consistent with the statute, that we have a program and complying with that statutory requirement. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cole, followed by Vice Mayor Rivas.
Mr. Mayor, you have the advantage of having been on the council when the ordinance for the civilian police oversight commission was, was adopted. I agree with Councilmember Hampton that I would like their advice. That doesn't mean we're giving up our authority under state law or under our own charter, but if they have input, I would like to see it not, you know, just reflected as somebody said this and somebody else said that. I would like, as Councilmember Hampton had said, that they make a motion, and they make a motion either to recommend our approval, or they make a motion to recommend changes or suggestions. And it appears that he asked for this last, last year, and I would join him in that. I think we have the ability as a council to direct that unless the city attorney tells us that the ordinance precludes that. Are they precluded from giving us advice?
They're not precluded from giving recommendations to the council. They can't make decisions.
Of course, nor would I want them to. They are an advisory commission, as all of our commissions are. Even the ones that make decisions, those are appealable to us as well. So, I don't, I don't know that this is on the agenda. If there's any problem with it, then we should agendize it with, if there isn't any problem, I think at least two members of the council would like to see the commission give that, give, give that opportunity next year.
Why don't we recognize, oh, Ms. Rivas, and then I'll, I'll recognize the Chair of the CPOC, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, when I spoke earlier, I neglected to compliment the department on how far this report and process has come along over the four years, and I think a lot of that is from working with the CPOC. I believe one of their big recommendations was to actually include a picture on each item, so we know what the heck we're talking about. It's not all of us know what a 50 cal it is, what a such-and-such is, so that was a great recommendation to make this more accessible to residents and understand what our police attorney has and is using. So I think it's just been a, a great collaboration, and so I want to compliment the commission and the department for working together, and again, we're four years in, I think we're, we've really, we're dial, dialing in what we want to see, and yeah, I think just knowing what the commission's recommendation or thoughts are in some way, it, it would be helpful. So I think we've, I just want to congratulate everyone on, on working very well and very hard on this process over four years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rivas. Ms. Jones, Madam Chair?
Hi, Espree Jones, Chair of Police Oversight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me up, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Personally, I was absolutely thrilled that this report reflected so many of our previous requests and recommendations to just make it more user-friendly. Again, Councilmember Cole said, "I don't know about this 50 cal," and just like, yeah, I know all about it, and that's definitely been a concern of the CPOC. I think that Lieutenant Russo did an amazing job in making it very clear what they use different things for, so it eliminated a lot of questions that we have had in previous years, and especially, again, because we could see them, there was quite a bit of questions about the helicopters and concerns with noise, but we, those aren't the only helicopters making noise, because Pasadena is wonderful that way. I don't know if anyone had any other specific questions, but yeah, overall, I, we were very much pleased with the reflection of those previous requests coming to fruition, and Lieutenant Russo being so thorough, and Commander Grisafi filling in those other blanks that Russo maybe couldn't answer for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, thank you for your service, and please pass it on to your colleagues as well. Okay, we have a motion, and is there a second? Motion and a second, are there any objections? Again, this is to just certify our program, comply with the state statute that requires that. It's no objections, matter's approved. Now, next, item five is up.
This adoption of a resolution terminating the local public health emergency issued by a declaration of the health officer in response to the Eaton Fire events and windstorm conditions in the city of Pasadena.
And, go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. To make the presentation, we have our Director of Public Health, Manuel Carmona. We also have a fairly robust agenda report that talks about all of the issues, and so we have a presentation if the council would like, or we could answer questions, or proceed as you'd like.
We do have one public comment card on this.
And recall that the emergency declarations are twofold. One is an economic, and the other one is a health emergency. It allows the council and the city to be more responsive in, in emergencies, and so now we're terminating the health emergency. Did we want a presentation? Okay, Mr. Masuda?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Director Carmona. Thank you so much for all your work during the fires, and it was just tremendous, and your staff as well. Thank you very much. I jumped straight to soil testing, and, because at city parks, it talks about Ellis's Dog Park, which is my district, Hamilton Park, and Victory Park. I was pleased to hear that the results confirmed that lead and heavy metals in the park's soil were not concerned for humans' health. What, do you have any more to say on that? I mean, that's great news, so, but do you have anything more to say about the soil testing?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Mayor, Councilmember Masuda, are you speaking specifically about parks or about soil testing in general?
Just in general, because there was so much controversy about soil testing, and I just wanted the, the public to hear it from you.
That's right. So LA County Department of Public Health does have a soil testing program. It's free. It offers composite testing for people on private residential properties. The way that it works is that people collect four samples from the property, submit it to the county, and then they get the results about 10 days back. They have a website that's publishing those results, and actually in the report, if you look on page five, it does give a breakdown of the ZIP codes, and what we're seeing is that about one in four properties that were tested in ZIP codes 91103 and 91104 are testing for elevated levels of lead, so that's above 200 parts per million, but in ZIP code 91107, it's about 5%. And so what we really are encouraging residents to do is to participate in that testing if they haven't already, and if their results come back with elevated results, that it would be appropriate for them to engage a professional to look at their property and see if there's any cause for specific concerns.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, again, good work. Oh, do we have any? Oh, Mr. Madison, I apologize.
Thank you, Mayor, I just pushed my button, so thank you, and thank you also, Mr. Carmona. You mentioned no persons were impacted by the lead and the other residues and all, but I, I do have a concern about our first responders, firefighters, police officers, other responders. Does that statement include that, or are we, sort of, were you thinking more generally about residents?
We're thinking more generally about residents, you know, in terms of, there's ongoing access to free blood, lead level testing through the county, through quest diagnostics. So far, about 1,800 individuals have been tested. Only nine individuals out of the 1,800 have tested for elevated levels of lead and blood. All of them are adults. With regard to, specifically for first responders, because that's more of a work, worker health, safety issue, it's something that our Safety Office and the Human Resources Department should be looking into.
Okay, I would just ask the city manager to keep an eye on that and let us know to, within the boundaries of, obviously, propriety and employment privacy. And the other thing is just, it's great that the county's doing some of those things. There was a pretty scathing report that the county commissioned that was critical, but many felt didn't go far enough in terms of really calling out the shortcomings. Has, has our city reviewed that report, our city staff, and looked for room for improvement in what we've done, and I want to be clear, it's a total different, totally different approach that we took from the county in terms of our response.
Yeah, the LA County report is, is an evaluation of the evacuation system, which falls beyond the public health scope.
Well, pretty, pretty important to the public health of the residents, that they evacuate safely and quickly if there's a fire.
Agreed, but outside the scope of public health, I guess I defer to the city manager, possibly the fire department to respond.
Certainly.
We have looked at, reviewed the report. We also provided information from our city, the same information we provided to the council. We made that information available to the county, and it was included in part of their report, and for our own efforts, you know, we thankfully had a very good response. We've done a lot of after-action reports for ourselves, and even in the report we provided to the council, we recognized some areas where we could improve, but mostly we were pleased with the way we were able to respond to the once-in-a-lifetime tragedy that, that came our way. But yeah, we, we definitely, as part of the emergency process, there's always a required after-action report, and we have engaged in those processes at multiple levels and multiple occasions here in the city.
You know, I'd ask my colleague, the Chair of Public Safety, whether it might be appropriate at some point to have a report about that, where we address both our own after-action analysis and the counties. And the reason I think it's so important is our, our firefighters and police officers and others were in county territory trying to mitigate the catastrophe and the failure to notify and the failure to respond by the county's staff. So, did, did we provide information to the, the consultants preparing that report about what we were doing that night?
I, I don't know the scope of what we provided. I do know we provided all the information we provided here to the council. We also have the, the state government, through the governor's offices, looking at a similar report, and has requested a number of public records from us, and we are gathering those to provide them, to the extent there, with the city of Pasadena. Some of that information is with our dispatch center, which is separate from us, but we're working in coordination to provide that information for that state report as well. But yes, to the extent we can provide public information and records relating to the incident, we are doing so to the best of our ability.
Great. Councilmember Hampton, would you consider having a hearing at Public Safety at some point in the future, when convenient and appropriate, on the response to the?
I'm fine with that, but I'm not the Chair of Public Safety.
Oh, what, just, Mayor, is it yourself?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, wrong, wrong committee.
You're on the committee, last I checked, Mr. Madison.
Honestly, the four committees I think I sit on, they all sort of blur together, so... Not all, ledge policy. Yeah, that one, I know who the Chair is, because I'm the Chair on that one, so forgive me, Mayor.
No, no, that's eight. I've been overlooked before. Pun intended, Mr. Madison.
Okay, please consider my request. Thank you.
Okay.
We do have one public comment card?
Yes, public comment.
Katie? You have a minute and a half? Go ahead.
Thank you, it's the last time, tonight. Yeah, I want to talk about Agenda Item Five. A lot of blame being passed around here, it sounds like, on the county, but I, I think really the city needs to take some responsibility for the failures with evacuations, the failures with the way people have been taken care of, largely black citizens and elders in Pasadena. I was at the convention center when the city, last minute, used city buses and city bus drivers to ship everyone out of the Pasadena Convention Center, so that they could host events that they felt were more important and more profitable than Pasadena and Alzadina residents, who are still being impacted by the long-term health impacts, whether it's their housing, or their health, or both. So I just want to know what exactly qualifies this as over, this, you're deciding this, there's no more health emergency. Also want to highlight that many of the responders were day laborers who have been responding, were on the front lines responding to clear up the debris from the fires, who were completely unpaid and have done this on their volunteer time, and I'm not sure there's been any kind of respect for that, or, or any kind of honoring of that. I'm hearing a lot about the firemen or the policemen who weren't there. It was the day laborers who are also being targeted currently at the Pasadena.
Your time has expired, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, and you should, you should know, and the public should know, that we were scheduled to thank members of the Job Center and their supporters for their work during the Eaton Fire today, and unfortunately, that matter, that had to be rescheduled at their request, but we, that was planned for the ceremonials this evening. I, I did have, this, one of my colleagues, okay, no one else is in the queue, so I did have one request. I think the suggestion made, I think it was Mr. Madison, somebody made the suggestion that, or Mr. Masuda, that we track employees, but I, I do also think we ought to track, and that's appropriate, and I support that, not track, but that we monitor employees that have been impacted, and test, and provide testing. But I do think, you know, we should keep something of, I'll call it a heat map, for the lack of a better term, a... for the lack of a better term, a map showing where residents that turn up to have elevated levels of lead may reside to see if there's a particular part of our city where we ought to be providing more outreach and testing and to see if there are any clusters, if again, for the lack of a better term, of people that were impacted or neighborhoods that were impacted.
Absolutely, Mayor. And I should note that the data so far, you know, obviously we continue to be vigilant. We're monitoring the data as it emerges from our academic and regional and public health partners. The data so far has shown that there isn't a good predictor for where these potential impacts might arise in our community. In fact, what we find is that when you look at one property, the test results for that one particular property is not indicative of what you might find immediately adjacent. And so what we're struggling with is trying to figure out how to make sure that people have access to the services and that if there's a trend that we're able to identify it. Because right now, it seems that they vary widely from property to property, but the outreach continues to promote access to the free services. I think testing, monitoring is the best thing that we can do to make sure that we are aware. And of course, as more data arises, we'll be looking for those trends if they arise.
Thank you. Let's hope not.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion and a second? Mr. Masuda moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hampton. Are there any objections? See none. The matter is approved. And now we turn to Items Six and Seven together. And I will have to turn the Chair over to a member of the council. I've gone in, in, we started with the most senior member of the council and now we're to, I believe, Mr. Hampton, Mr. Masuda. When the Vice Mayor and I are both, I have to step out of the room. And in this case, I have to step out because my home is within 500 feet of El Molino, one of the streets that's impacted. And I also own a property along Mountain, right next to Fair Oaks and a property on Raymond next to Fair Oaks. So, and so I will, for those reasons, consistent with the law, recuse myself and allow any other member of the council to do the same who needs to. Mr. Jones?
Go ahead.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. I myself also own residential property and rental property next to the Greenways, so I will have to recuse myself as well.
And I am in the same position. I have my home residence within 500 feet of one of the Greenways and I have a rental property within, I believe, within 1,000 feet of another Greenway. So I will also recuse.
Mayor, could I just inquire, and certainly potential conflicts are a very personal decision for each member, but could we display Attachment A to the staff report on the overhead? And I'm not, my intent is not to discuss the substance of the matter, but for me, Michelle, it would be hard to imagine a public generally exception that wouldn't, that would ever be met if this one doesn't meet it. If you look at that, if you look at the areas of the city.
I understand. And we thought, I think, but in looking at the FPPC opinions on Greenway-type projects and the public generally exception, you look at the 25% district for the council person and 25% within the city. And when those numbers were calculated, they did not reach. So there was an analysis that took place over the past couple.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Madison, thank you for raising that. Situations like this, I think we've got to make an argument to the FPPC that it's not fair. You know, this affects, I agree with you. Vice Mayor Rivas and Councilmember Jones made the same arguments to the city attorney and failed miserably. I want to participate. Well, I failed miserably, but I won't speak for you guys.
And Mayor, also, specific plans, a similar situation, where obviously we live in and near our specific plans and they have such an impact on our community and affect most, if not all, of the community.
I mean, these are, this, this plan is intended, well, this is for a future item. Maybe Ledge Policy can take this up. But plans like this, specific plans and others, other plans are intended to have an impact citywide. Planning, and so I do think there's an argument to be made. You know, that's why we run for office, is to have a voice, but yeah, for the community. And so in this, Vice Mayor Rivas, Mr. Madison and I, I failed miserably. And he did too.
I wouldn't say that you, any of you failed, it's just that that is how that's been interpreted by the FPPC. We look at trying legislatively or politically to see if there's a way to solve major projects that have an impact on individual council members.
This is a major, in my words now, and not a criticism of the city attorney, she's just doing her job. But the FPPC has, I think, should understand that when projects like this are intended to have a citywide impact, there should be an opportunity for us to participate, not nearly half the legislative body being disqualified because we happen to own a home in the city.
And in fact, Mayor, I'm reminded, and by the way, I'm the Chair of Ledge Policy. I'd be happy to take this up, but we'll have to give some thought to a structural solution for this. But when, when we were fighting the 710 freeway, Mayor Bogart and I each had homes literally right on the route. And we got both legal counsel and then the FPPC to opine that that was a purely exception. And that, that was a bigger project probably than this.
It was.
But it also was limited geographically to one part of the city. And yet, everyone in Pasadena was impacted, including, you know, residents far away from the route. So seems to me like the same thing here, especially because I doubt this will be the first time, the last time we discussed Greenways, right? So it's a broader issue.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll leave it in the, in the hands of the staff and the Chairman of the Ledge Policy Committee.
And then will the meeting conclude with the smaller group, Mayor? Just for purposes of the adjournments and?
Yes, so we'll recuse ourselves and, and, no, the meeting won't conclude, did you say the meeting concluded?
Yeah, these are the last items.
For another item?
Oh, no, this is.
This is it.
Yeah, so just for purposes of the adjournments and all.
Right.
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton will handle it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton?
Thank you. Well, you guys could thank the FPPC for letting you out of 730.
We are going to discuss sister cities at the end of this.
I think I have to recuse myself too.
So I could report out the correspondence because there was a lot of correspondence received. So this is Item Six and Seven concurrently. For the correspondence for Item Six, the City Clerk's Office received, this is from September 8th, 32 letters in opposition to the staff recommendation and/or expressing concerns with the city building concrete islands that would block travel lanes throughout the city. That was, we also found that there was 22 Pasadena residents of the 32, two non-residents and eight residents not stated. There was 160 letters in support of the staff recommendation and/or providing comments in support of the Greenways plan with 119 stated Pasadena residents and then 37 non-residents and six residents not stated. Two letters providing information, letters of support from various local organizations, data from individuals who support safe Greenways, and a list of 1,022 names of individuals who support the Greenways plan. That was from the September 8th meeting. Then for this meeting, we received 48 letters in opposition to the staff recommendation and/or expressing concerns with the city building the concrete islands, of which 37 were stated Pasadena residents, one non-resident and 10 residents not stated. There were 40 letters in support of the staff recommendation and providing comments in support of the Greenways plan, 35 of which were Pasadena residents, two non-residents and three residents not stated. And then one letter with a list of 26 names of individuals who are in opposition to the Greenways plan. All the correspondence was posted online, distributed to the council as part of the record for this item.
Thank you. We will turn it over to the city manager and then to.
Mr. Chairman?
The Councilmember Cole?
I heard that we were going to take these up concurrently. I would ask that we take them up sequentially. There are two items. One is a contract for design, another is a contract for public outreach. I have different concerns about the second item.
That is fine with me if it is fine with the rest of my colleagues.
We could still vote on them separately, as I understand.
Yeah, so we could vote on them separately, but the items are going to be presented together? Is that correct?
The presentation we have planned is to have both Items Six and Seven presented together.
Okay.
With separate votes.
With separate, but separate votes for each item.
But will it be identified, we are now talking about items, okay, perfect, that's.
I'm okay with that.
And the speakers would speak to both items together in whatever time is determined to be allotted. So if they want to speak on both items, they don't speak twice. They would speak once within that allotted time period.
Okay, thank you.
So you should describe whatever the time period is, I don't know. Yeah.
And how many public speakers do we have on this item?
Give me a second to count, maybe I'll tell you after the.
We can go straight into the presentation then.
Thank you, Chair Hampton. Director Transportation, Joaquin Cikus, will make the presentation again on both Items Six and Seven. The presentation should be about 15 minutes, just to guide expectations. Thank you.
There are 42 speaker cards.
Thank you, Chair Hampton. Thank you, Miguel. I also wanted to thank the public that has taken interest in these items. There are two contracts before council today. One is for design services and one is for outreach services. And I just wanted to reiterate to City Council and to anybody who's taken interest in this that no decisions have been made on either, on any of these corridors for the implementation of any treatments. Really, the purpose of these two contracts is to be able to conduct the public outreach, conduct the community engagement and identify potential treatments and do that through conceptual design. I have read through all the correspondence that's been submitted and just based on some of the comments I received, I do want to just upfront note a few things about the project just to, to make sure that we're kind of level-setting. First off is that this project does not recommend bike lanes along these four corridors, along the entire corridors. It does not recommend the removal of parking completely along these four corridors, nor does it recommend the removal of travel lanes along these corridors. There is a segment on each of these four corridors that crosses the freeway, which could include a bike lane and a potential lane reduction. But all of that would be worked out through the public engagement process with the residents and the businesses along these corridors. So nothing has been determined yet. And these four corridors were selected because of their characteristics. They're low-volume streets, they cross the freeway and they don't have freeway on- or off-ramps. So really, the purpose of these projects is to identify ways to slow down traffic and enhance safety for drivers, for pedestrians, for bicyclists along these corridors. And there's a toolbox of potential treatments to do that. With that, I will move into the presentation and we'll start with Item Six, which is the contract with TDG Engineering to deliver the conceptual design, preliminary engineering and final design for the four Greenways. The recommendation before City Council, first off is to find that the action is not a project subject to CEQA and then authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with TDG Engineering as a result of a competitive selection process for professional engineering services for the Pasadena Greenways. It's broken up into two phases. The first is the base contract amount of $586,313,000. And that's conceptual design to really help assist or provide input into the outreach process. And then the second phase is the final design, including the development of plan specifications and estimates. And that phase we wouldn't move into, it's an optional phase, we wouldn't move into until we had all the outreach completed for the conceptual design to really determine what types of treatments could be installed along the corridors to reduce speed and enhance safety. In addition, there's a contingency amount of $100,000 on this contract. A little bit of background, in 2015, the Bicycle Transportation Action Plan was adopted, which identified these four north-south Greenways. In 2021, city staff identified some potential treatments along these corridors and really wanted to analyze some traffic patterns, look at potential costs and better situate ourselves to receive grant funding. So while we didn't look at all the treatments, we did conduct a initial study on some of this. So we would have some data to bring back to the public about the potential impacts and potential benefits of some of these safety enhancements. In 2022, we were awarded funding through the Measure R Mobility Improvement Project Funding in the amount of $12.6 million. In 2024, the funding agreement was executed. And then this year, we issued the RFP to select a design consultant. So the scope of work for the Greenways identifies these four streets. El Molino Avenue, Wilson Avenue, Sarbanita Avenue and Craig Avenue. And you'll see on the images on the left there, these four streets are four streets that cross the freeway at locations that do not have on- and off-ramps to the freeway. They're lower-volume streets. And really, the intent of this project is to look at potential tools in our toolbox, such as raised medians, speed humps or intersection treatments, to really provide a safer environment for all road users. As noted before, the Phase One is the outreach data collection, conceptual design and preliminary engineering. It also includes the ability to conduct a quick build demonstration on Craig Avenue. Hearing from what we've heard from, from council, on many occasions is that we'd like to be able to try things with low-cost temporary solutions instead of going straight into kind of a design of a concrete solution. So this allows us to better determine whether we want to move forward with certain treatments through a final design phase. Second phase is the final design phase and that's where we would develop a big package to advertise construction on these streets, following all the outreach, if we come up with treatments to enhance safety on these corridors. A little bit more on this Phase One outreach and really some highlights of this first phase of outreach. There's the second contract, which is Item Number Seven, which would be the outreach contract to conduct all of these meetings and facilitate all these meetings. But the design contract has to really provide the information that can be used at those meetings. So it's the development of the concept drawings, it's the development of any traffic studies to determine what, how these impact, how these projects could impact traffic or how they could benefit safety along these corridors. We have the Community Advisory Committee that would be established and up to 20 community meetings to target each corridor. So that's 20 along the four corridors. And that can be broken up into smaller segments within each corridor. We have 12 coordination meetings with internal and external departments and then 10 stakeholder meetings. And then, as I noted before, the quick build option on Craig. And again, really, the purpose of both of these contracts is to really be able to engage with the community, the residents, the businesses along these corridors and really determine what is preferred and what they would like to see and not see along these corridors. The process, in April, we issued the request for proposals, 83. Individuals downloaded the proposals on April 14th. We had a pre-proposal meeting. May 7th, we received four proposals and then conducted the evaluation of those proposals. This is the evaluation criteria that led us to the scoring of the, the four proposals that came in. And TDG Engineering received the highest score as shown in this scoring matrix. Little bit about TDG Engineering. They demonstrated the highest score overall and have extensive industry experience in active transportation design and implementation. In Pasadena, they've worked on complete streets planning tool, pedestrian. In Pasadena, they've worked on Complete Streets Planning Tool, Pedestrian Action Plan, as well as other design initiatives, and also they have other specific design experience in Redwood City for bicycle facility design services, and Seattle/Washington as part of their Seattle Neighborhood Greenways Program. Their subconsultant team includes Craftwater Engineering, Here-L.A., Somas, and GeoAdvantix Incorporated, and Craftwater Engineering is a local Pasadena firm. Fiscal impact of this contract, again, broken up by phase, the base bid is the five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Phase two is four-hundred-and-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-one. Adding the contingency of a hundred thousand, the total not-to-exceed contract amount would be one million ninety-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. These would be funded through the Measure R MIP funding, and there's no impact to the general fund. The second contract is the contract to really facilitate the communications, public engagement for this project, but also five other projects. And this is a recommended contract award to Ariano Associates, again, as a result of a competitive selection process, for an amount not to exceed nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. This includes the base contract amount of nine-hundred-twenty-nine-nine-sixty-four, and a contingency amount of forty-thousand-thirty-six dollars for any necessary change orders. Little bit of background on the outreach contract. Again, the funding for this contract was secured through the Measure R Mobility Improvement Project Funding, and the intent of putting all of these into one outreach contract was really for us to be able to, to help the design phases through these various multi-year, multimodal infrastructure projects that were starting for these six individual projects. And due to the volume of projects, and really the specialized nature of this public engagement for these transportation projects, the services cannot be effectively performed in-house. And you'll see, as we get into the next slide, some of the items, number of meetings, and the scope of this project. So in 2025, Professional Design Services, RFP, was released for communication and engagement firm for this multimodal communication and public engagement support services. This contract supports six major upcoming transportation projects. The Greenways, obviously, is one of them, and that's why these two are linked together today, but it also includes the Columbia Street Improvement Project, the Pasadena Avenue St. John Roadway Network Project, traffic signal improvements at Orange Grove and Holly, Orange Grove in Colorado, multimodal improvements on San Rafael and Linda Vista in Colorado, and also Orange Grove Mobility Improvement Program. And really, what we wanted to do is be able to provide centralized staff support for public engagement for all of these major upcoming Department of Transportation projects. It allows us to really speak with a single-city voice, to enable consistency and branding and engagement of the approach for all of these projects, and will allow us to provide a robust and effective community engagement services that include forming and facilitating the community advisory committees, conducting up to forty-five public and community stakeholder meetings, door-to-door canvassing, administering community surveys, creating other websites, marketing and engagement material. And all of this will be done in collaboration with our Communications Division of the City Manager's Office, RPIO, and their staff, but it's just the, not only the, the volume of outreach required, but also the specialty nature of transportation outreach and being able to conduct these meetings and hear really from the residents and businesses. RFP process and selection, May of twenty-five, we issued the RFP. Eight proposals were submitted. Four of those proposals were submitted by local firms as a prime, where five, and five of these were, of the prime consultants, were either small or micro businesses. And then the evaluation committee included staff from Department of Transportation and the Office of City Manager's Communications and Marketing Section. Again, the evaluation that we use for scoring is shown here, and this is how the proposals came out. Ariano Associates came out as the top-scoring firm, followed by the firms that you see listed here on this slide. There were two firms that the proposals were not scored because they didn't meet the minimum requirements to perform the services, so they were considered non-responsive. A little bit more about Ariano Associates. It's a women and minority-owned certified small business. They have thirty years of experience providing community engagement and communication services specifically for transportation projects in Southern California, and the notable project experience, some notable project experience includes the Seven-Ten North Mobility Improvement Program through the City of Los Angeles, and City of Glendale-San Fernando Road Multimodal Improvement Project, and also additional work in the city, such as the outreach for the Union Street Protected Bike Lane. Fiscal impact on this, the design, the contract base, contract amount is nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-six-ninety-four. Adding the contingency, the not-to-exceed contract amount would be nine-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. The funding is appropriated through these various projects that have been funded through the Capital Improvement Program. Each of the projects would use their project budget, a portion of their project budget to pay for these outreach services, and there's no impact to the general fund. And then lastly, is just the project kickoff with the consultant teams, developing the engagement plan and scheduled outreach activities. Anticipated community engagement would begin in 2026, using not only this contract, but also through the design contract in order to develop the materials for the engagement, and then we would continue our collaboration with the Office of City Manager Communications and Marketing Section to ensure that all of our communication and material have a city consistent tone and that city voice. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Joaquin. Any, I don't see anyone in the queue, but I do have just a clarifying question. This is basically approval for the conceptual designs, or if we decide to move forward with these greenways, if we decide not to move forward with these greenways. This is literally just the work to begin the drafting of a plan.
So there's two contracts. The first one, item six, is the approval for the conceptual design and the option for the final design, so that would be part of that contract. The second contract is the outreach services for, in addition to the greenways, five other projects as well, so it's outreach on six projects.
And so, let's say hypothetically, the council says yes tonight, and we all say, let's move forward with the work. We get the plans back, the community really just doesn't like them. What happens to twelve million dollars?
Should nothing be built, whatever hasn't been spent out of that design contract, we could then determine how to utilize it for other transportation projects. So the grant is through the Measure R Mobility Improvement Project Funding. It's funding that's basically set aside for the City of Pasadena now that it's been awarded. We'd have to re-scope, go back to Metro with different projects, maybe it's a different corridor, maybe it's a different type of project, but it would have to be a project that meets the requirements of the MIP funding, so it's specific to, to safety enhancements, those types of things. It can't be used for pothole repair.
And these funds are a grant, and they're not general fund dollars.
That is correct.
And so these dollars could only be used for transportation projects.
Transportation projects that scoped, not, not pothole repair.
Just want to be very clear, so that anybody who's thinking that the money, you know, if we, if we don't vote in favor of this, the money, we're just going to lose this money, it's, it's grant money, and this is all based for our conceptual designs if the neighbors and the community decide that they want to move forward with this. Okay. Thank you. I will go to, I'm going to see some council members in the queue now. Councilmember Lyon.
Thank you, Chair. One quick, practical question about slide twenty-two. One slide back from here. I'm confused about the contingency amount. That forty thousand is about four percent, not ten. So is it, is it ten percent, or is it four percent, or am I missing, is my math very off?
Your math is not off. There's an error on the slide. I believe the total contract amount is nine-seventy, so the percentage isn't correct.
Great. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Masuda.
Thank you very much. I have two questions, and it comes from people writing me, and not that I agree with it, but I just wanted to ask you these questions, so you can answer it, and so clarify with our residents regarding these four streets. Does emergency vehicles, will they have access to reach homes in these projects?
Definitely. So there's two things. First off, since nothing has been determined, we'd go through this process to identify what potential treatments would be installed. As part of that, we work closely with Pasadena Fire to identify if there's any likelihood of a reduction in response time with Pasadena Fire for any types of treatment. So it's something that we continue to do, and we would make sure that we would not introduce something that would adversely affect safety.
Thank you. And second, the slowing traffic on these four streets, they will cause traffic problems?
Don't know the definition of problems, but they're not intended to cause any major backups. These streets are very low-volume streets. They range in volume from, I'd have to take a look at the numbers, but under five thousand for two of them, and under seven thousand for the other two, and that's daily volume. So what we're looking at is reducing the speed on these corridors to something that is more comfortable for pedestrians, bicyclists, and really will enhance the safety for all road users, including motorists. It's not going to be something that would detrimentally impact the corridor to the standpoint that we would anticipate a lot of, you know, gridlock or spillbacks.
Thank you. I believe that as well, but I just wanted to make sure that the residents got to hear what the answer is, even though it was obvious. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Madison.
My question was kind of a technical one, is we got disclosures under the taxpayer initiative, but just of the contractor that staff is recommending, don't we have discretion to choose another one tonight? So shouldn't we be getting the disclosures for all of the applicants when these types of things come up to us? And I'm sorry, I should have raised that, you know, offline, but it literally just dawned on me.
We have that information that's part of the proposals, I just don't have them with me.
But maybe can we put our heads together and figure out a way structurally to always have that, so that, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to public comment, unless there, nobody else is in the queue, perfect. We will move to public comment on items six and seven.
So with forty-two speaker cards, we're going to give a minute and a half to everybody. I'll call your name, and if you can, when you get, come forward, and then line up after the speaker down the middle. That'd be great. Kaitlin Wallace, followed by Andrew Barbo, followed by Matthew Millen, I mean, Milan, and then James L. Perry, then Kobe Miller. So if you hear your name, you can start making your way forward.
Yeah, and just to note for the record, the microphone, the speakers are on in the back, so those who go out momentarily are still considered part of the room, as long as they're listening and don't go someplace else, and they've all just been going right there.
Is Kaitlin Wallace here? No? All right, we'll move on to Andrew Barbo. Still not. Your name, sir? Matthew? Matthew. All right. Followed by James Perry? No? And then Kobe Miller, Andrew George, Elliot Diamond Hitchcock, and then Kathy Braidhill. So if you've heard any of those names, please go forward.
Come on down.
So Mr. Millen? Matthew?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'll ring a bell when you have thirty seconds left.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Matthew Milan. I was going to say hello to the mayor, but he's recused, so hello, city council, that is remaining up here. My name is Matthew Milan. As I said, I'm a resident and homeowner of this beautiful city, and I reside on North El Molino Avenue. I'm here today to voice my firm support for the greenways, and I believe that it is a vitally necessary and worthwhile project that will continue to push Pasadena to the forefront of livability and desirability. I find it distressing that there's been some misinformation, which you've alluded to here in these preemptive questions and answers that we had, talking about concrete furniture, things like this. I received some material on my doorstep about this. And as I understand it, of course, this is just to say yes or no to this contractor, to give us, to reach out to the community and to give us guidelines for what this may look like. So we don't know what it's going to look like just yet. And I just find it very distressing, again, that there's been this misinformation, this fear-mongering, you know, to turn people against it preemptively, before we've even seen what it really is. To conclude, I just want to thank, I want to thank the city for securing the funding of LA County tax money, so it's not City Monday, as I understand it, LA County tax money, that we should use or lose, and I have full faith that the city's selected contractor will deliver a compelling, comprehensive plan that serves to enrich the lives of all Pasadena residents for generations to come.
And your time is expired. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was an opportunity for me to actually ride somewhere that I found to be safe. It was an opportunity for me to actually ride somewhere that I found to be safe and appropriate to ride. I want to hear more of my story. I want to hear about the kid whose best day ever was, you know, riding on their parents' bike because their parent felt safe enough to ride. I want to hear about pedestrians who found new little spots in Pasadena because they found the walk there to be safe and pleasant. I want motorists to exchange insurance less, and I want them to enjoy riding down our beautiful streets instead. And I want residents, of course, to open their windows, hear our beautiful parrots, rather than closing them to keep out road noise. I could wax poetic forever, but I'll say this much in conclusion. These things can become possible if we invest in them. The people have spoken, as we've seen from the numbers, the people are here speaking. We can do this, so let's get started on building some greenways. Thank you.
Thank you. I was told that James L. Perry is virtual. We will call you at the, when we get through with the in-person. Elliot Diamond Hitchcock, followed by Kathy Braidhill, then Zem Bashan.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm a resident of South El Molino and Cordova. I've been a resident of Pasadena for a little less than a year, and I just want to say thank you for supporting the, well, beginning the support for the Greenways Project. Very much looking forward to seeing Pasadena become such a wonderful and walkable city as it already is. I don't represent JPL, but I'm, I work there, and I know a lot of foreign nationals there who all love to say how much they love Pasadena and its walkable and beautiful streets compared to the rest of LA County. No shame to the rest of LA, of course, we're all big fans. I'm not associated with any of the various groups here today, but I'm very glad to see the great amount of support that the Greenways Project seems to have from the community. I'm here today, I received a flyer, sharing, as I think one of our previous speakers said, some negative information, perhaps misinformation, and I thought, well, if one person with the flyer is saying something that I don't quite agree with, and I'll be the one person saying something against that, and I'm so glad to see so many other people in support of the greenways today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Braidhill, followed by Zem Bashan, then Julia Zapata and Dale Zapata.
Hi, thank you, council, very much for having us. I'm Kathy Braidhill. I'm a longtime Pasadena homeowner and Pasadena business owner, and longtime volunteer with your Department of Public Health. So I support the greenways, and I'm here on behalf of my post-rehab and physical therapy clients, my seniors, mobility-impaired, and very scarily, alarmingly children. For public safety, the council has banned sparklers and gas blowers, but where's the public safety ethos with regard to freeway-speed cars going down residential streets? So for this, we really need those greenways. Do your kids walk or bike around town? Chauffeured children are lacking the strength and coordination from the intermittent movement from these movements, so when they try sports, they're getting injured, and they come into me. Inactive kids become inactive teens and adults prone to injury and chronic pain. My seniors have to walk up and down parking lots in their driveways because the streets are so dangerous, so it's denying equitable access for seniors and kids. So the public safety crisis on the streets is turning into a public health crisis. While Burbank has dropped speed near school to school to fifteen miles per hour, Pasadena, so please be pro-child, pro-senior, and pro-public safety. Thank you for supporting the greenways.
Thank you. Zem Bashan, followed by Julia Zapata, then Dale Zapata, then Humira Afzal.
Hello, all. I'm Zem Bashan. I live on North El Molino, and I'm an avid cyclist. I biked here. And El Molino is a decent street to bike on, and it's kind of given me the opportunity to become a cyclist, and to bike to PCC, and to bike to Marshall when I went to high school. But it isn't as safe as it should be, and I can't convince really anyone else in my life to ride their bike, because it's dangerous. No teenagers are gonna become avid cyclists if they're worried about getting hit by a car. And whether it's their parents telling them that, or them feeling that, it tends to be the case. So a lot of people my age, as the previous speaker said, end up sitting inactive and getting chauffeured around by their parents to high school, and even to college. It would greatly increase safety and increase equity for the modes of share, for the modes of transit we have. Cyclists are a minority user on the roads, and they don't have the space they deserve. So, yeah. In addition, the Union Street Bike Lane is great, and it's protected, but it's hard to get there. And by increasing connectivity with these north-south bike greenways, I think we can increase ridership on the Union Street Bike Lane. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Zapata, followed by Dale Zapata, then Humira Afzal, then Aubrey Schoenhoff.
Good evening. My name is Julia Zapata, and I am a District Seven resident and a teacher at Polytechnic School on Wilson Avenue. I'm speaking for myself as a resident and on behalf of Poly as a member of our Drive Less Committee. I support the contracts, and I want to see all ages and abilities greenways built to create safe neighborhood streets. The greenways will provide safe routes to school and give students transportation options. There are currently no safe north-south bike routes in Pasadena. I bike commute all over this city, and I have personally been yelled at by drivers on Wilson to get out of the road, even on a bike path. That's why PUSD, PCC, Caltech, Polytechnic, and Sequoia all support the greenways. Kids thrive when they get the independence, fun, and exercise of getting themselves to school. And as a teacher who bikes or walks to school every day, I also want these streets safe and slow for me. As an institution, Poly is committed to moving toward green alternative transportation for our students and away from car dependencies. And we cannot do that without the partnership, the city's partnership in developing safer streets. Thank you for investing in the health of our students.
Thank you. Dale Zapata, followed by Humira Afzal, then Aubrey Schoenhoff, and then Pilar Reynaldo.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Dale Zapata, and I am a resident of Pasadena, and I strongly support the greenways. I live on Michigan Avenue and speak from daily experience. I walk and bike from my commutes to work, to run errands, to go to the gym, and to visit friends, and to move to and from Pasadena and our neighboring communities. These greenways will provide essential connections to the places that I commute, and to major infrastructure that I use regularly, including the Metro A Line stations, and the Cordova Street and Union Street Bike Lanes. For residents like me to get the full use out of these projects, we need to address the crucial gap where north and south routes are missing for commuters. These links are, these links often disappear at the exact moments in our commutes when safety is most needed. I urge the council to prioritize and commit resources to developing the amazing greenways that Pasadena deserves. Thank you.
Thank you. Humira Afzal, followed by Aubrey Schoenhoff.
Good evening. I am a District Seven resident, and I am here in support of funding of the Greenway study. A bicycle has been an important means of transportation for me for at least fifty years. There are quite a few years where my bicycle gave me access to job and educational opportunities that I would not have otherwise had. I've experienced roadways become increasingly dangerous for everyone, bicyclists, pedestrians, and also drivers, especially over the last ten to fifteen years. I've been hit twice in the last seven years. One of those times was just after moving to Pasadena, six weeks ago. You get a lot of complaints about traffic congestion, and we as taxpayers spend billions of dollars building more lanes and more roads only to induce even more traffic congestion. The only real solution to alleviating traffic congestion is to get cars off the road by providing safe and practical alternatives to private passenger vehicles. Everyone benefits. Adding more bike greenways is one of the kinds of projects to accomplish this. This afternoon, I went through all the emails and petitions, here's my tally, it's what I did at lunch, sent in regard, the greenways proposals. The numbers cited earlier show that the emails were overwhelmingly in support. Many people sent very thoughtful emails. The small number of rude or hostile emails were sent by people in opposition. I actually found myself, however, agreeing with the person who wrote, "Okay, folks, what the hell are you thinking and even considering this?" when she also wrote, "Know your constituents and listen to them." Yes, please do listen to your constituents.
Your time has expired?
Because they all want this. Well, most of them.
Aubrey Schoenhoff, then Pilar Reynaldo, then Brenna Consilla, then Maya Roman.
Hey, I'm Aubrey Schoenhoff. I currently live in Altadena, and about a year ago, I was living on El Molino Avenue. I bike commute to Caltech for work most days, and I just want to voice my strong support for this contract, as we need immediate action to improve the safety of our streets. I have multiple friends who also bike commute to Caltech on Wilson Avenue, one of the proposed greenways, and they've been hit many times. In fact, my fiancee biked over here from our home in Altadena, and he was almost hit on his way to this meeting. When I lived on El Molino, taking a walk was just as dangerous, because people run stop signs constantly, speed, and I was almost hit by cars many times just walking to the gym, or walking to CVS. It is embarrassing for a city as nice as Pasadena to have such poor infrastructure that does not revolve around single-passenger vehicles. I have never felt safer on a bike than in the Union-protected bike lane, which I love. However, there is a need for north-south corridors to connect to that bike lane, because I have never felt less safe on a bike than when on any other city street in Pasadena. I urge you to protect the safety, health, and happiness of our pedestrians and cyclists, and approve moving forward on this greenways project. Thank you.
Thank you. Pilar Reynaldo, then Brenna Consilla, then Maya Roman, and then Colin Bogart.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Pilar Reynaldo. As an avid walker, I wholeheartedly support the greenways. I believe comfortable walking routes are popular and important to residents. For example, walking to Romans from Madison Heights should be comfortable and safe. Walking from the apartments north of the freeway to businesses on Colorado Boulevard is a short walk, but crossing the freeway can be intimidating. Make these routes quiet, inviting, and safe is an important goal to the greenways. I have experienced greenways in other states. They encourage community members to walk to local destinations such as errand-running, dining, exercise, and visiting friends. This is something Pasadena should encourage within all of its neighborhoods. Walking is the second skill all of us learn. We should be able to safely move within our cities for the remainder of our lives. I encourage all of you to support the greenways. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenna Consilla, then Maya Roman, then Colin Bogart, then Cyril Hicks.
Hello, my name is Brenna Consilla. I moved to Pasadena in February from Glendale, specifically because I was seeking a community that was, where I was able to be connected to people by walking, biking, and taking public transit. I found all of those things to be very possible in Pasadena, especially when moving east-west. I really enjoy the Cordova, I really enjoy Cordova and Union, but I find that traveling north-south can sometimes be scary if I'm not in my car, especially if going over the freeway is scary. I support the study on, you know, allocating the money to the study for the greenways, assigning the contract. Besides improving safety, it makes Pasadena a place where people want to live, and where all people can feel connected and engaged with the community. A car payment shouldn't be the price to move safely around your city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Maya Roman, followed by Colin Bogart, then Cyril Hicks, then Scott Habermill.
Hi, I'm Maya Roman, a Pasadena resident, also a JPLer, and I primarily commute on my bicycle. I live on South El Molino, and I'm in support of granting the contract to get the ball rolling on the all-ages and abilities greenways. I use either the Cordova or Union Street Bike Lanes every day, and they're great, but it's difficult to feel safe going north or south, especially crossing the greenway, which I, or the freeway, which I have to do every day. The traffic calming that would result from the greenway implementation would make biking in Pasadena much more accessible to everyone, and not just seasoned cyclists like me. I also live across the street from a senior community, and there's a school at the end of my block, and I often fear for our elderly neighbors I see out for walks, and for the kids I see walking or riding their bikes to school. And I know turning a few streets, including El Molino, into a greenway would go a long way to making our streets safer for everyone.
Thank you. Colin Bogart, then Cyril Hicks, then Scott Habermill, then Jeff Sirleski. Go ahead, Colin.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Colin Bogart, I'm a resident of District One. I figure I should start by saying that I am speaking on behalf of myself, and not on behalf of Day One, which I spoke for earlier. I support, of course, the greenways. Including my work at Day One, I have twenty-five years' experience working in relation to biking and walking, both in terms of education and programming. And I can tell you, in those twenty-five years, I have had so many conversations where the same thing is told to me every time. "I would bike more, but it's scary. It's not safe." And so I would say, ask yourself, ask yourself, ask your constituents, ask your neighbors, why don't you ride a bike more? And I can almost guarantee you, they're gonna tell you, "It's not safe." So this project is just part of the puzzle to make biking more safe in Pasadena. It's one piece of a larger network. And so I encourage you to move this project along for all the reasons that have already been enumerated. Thank you.
Thank you. Cyril Hicks, followed by Scott Habermill, followed by Jeff Sirleski. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Cyril Hicks. I am a District, a District Six North San Rafael resident, and Pasadena cycle commuter since sixth grade. I work for Polytechnic School where I attended, and I'm here today as an individual in support of Pasadena's greenway initiatives. Pasadena has come to offer the best of LA County in shopping, dining, events, and entertainment. The Pasadena experience should extend to pedestrians on our streets, where safety and comfort will be key to future retail and dining success. Increases in commuter non-car traffic must be accounted for, or we will continue to see unsafe streets with preventable accidents and impeding commuter flows. Pasadena's current shared-lane road designs are a hazard. I have been witness and victim to many dangerous and angry drivers. As an educator, I am compelled to advocate for our children and seniors. They must have access to healthy, safe, and clean car alternatives. Real benefits to traffic control exist for drivers, too. If the city encourages walkers and cyclists to use certain streets, others can be kept free of slow or impeding traffic. Traffic control systems rely on consistency that mixed-use bike lanes and on-demand crosswalks can disrupt. Critical mass in systems adoption is extremely important. Greater connectivity between our disparate bike and pedestrian infrastructure pieces encourages greater use. Each added component becomes cheaper and more effective as the web expands. Finally, projects like this are excellent forms of municipal and civil signaling. When we build infrastructure that encourages safe driving, we create safer drivers. When we tell communities that their children will be safe, we see greater pedestrian participation. By offering healthier, greener options, we tell our residents that the city supports their well-being. Please consider the benefits to health and safety outlined today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Scott Habermill, followed by Jeff Sirleski, then Thomas Ty, then Cynthia Kennedy, then Matt Abramson.
Hi, good evening, members of the council. Thanks for letting me speak today. My name is Scott Habermill. I'm a resident of Pasadena District Seven, and I live on Wilson Avenue. I'm here to urge you to please support the allocation of this contract for the greenways. I just want to tell you sort of my primary rationale for why I think this is a great project and why you should support it. The first is that I believe fundamentally that it's everyone's right to get around Pasadena without a car while both being safe and feeling safe. That includes many modalities, including walking and biking. And essentially, right now, I don't think that's the case. I don't think that people are safe, and I definitely know that people don't feel safe. I personally also do not feel safe. And I also just want to mention, my, in my personal case, eighteen months ago, I lost my dad to a senseless and preventable active traffic violence while he was biking to work in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And that didn't happen in Pasadena, but I can assure you, what I learned through all of this, is that the cost of traffic violence is significantly higher than any cost I can imagine associated with the greenways. So please, give the streets back to the people who live on them, and send this project out to be designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Sirleski, then Thomas Ty, if Thomas Ty is here, then Cynthia Kennedy, Matt Abramson, and then James L. Perry, virtually.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Jeff Sirleski. I'm a Pasadena resident, a board member of Keep Pasadena Moving, and a former TAC commissioner. I share the concerns of some people here tonight, as well as the numerous emails that you've received, and I want to touch on something that could be incorporated into the contracts here tonight, or another contract another time. We need to start seeing bike usage data on bike infrastructure projects. Cordova, our forty-five-point-eight-mile roadway network, Union, none of us here have seen any bike usage data on any of these projects. The mobility element was passed in 2015 at the suggestion of DOT, and some members of the public that are here tonight. Their reasoning was the same as it is now. If you build it, the bicyclists will come. It's been ten years since we've started building bike infrastructure. We need to find out if they're here. When I was on TAC, I pushed for a transportation system based on how residents want to travel. By demanding that we start seeing bike usage data to go along with vehicle counts and public transit boardings that the department already compiles, you can put us on the road, so to speak, to building that kind of system, starting tonight. I also just want to say real quick about the plans. There are actually two plans for the greenways. There's one in the Greenways feasibility study, as well as the Bicycle Transportation Action Plan. In fact, DOT is on record in one of the April TAC meetings saying that they are looking to incorporate a number of the elements from the BTAP into the greenways plans. So the flyers that were received by residents are not full of misinformation. They're full of information directly from the department. And with that, thank you for the time.
Thank you. I don't see Thomas Ty, so we'll go to Cynthia Kennedy, then followed by Matt Abramson, and then I'm gonna go to other speakers who are here, and then we'll get back to the virtual speakers. Go ahead.
Good evening. There's so many reasons to support the greenways, including the quality of life, the safety of ourselves and our children and our seniors. I would like to speak up for the importance of active transportation in fighting climate change. We know that the single-largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions is from transportation, and it's so important that we do everything we can as part of a comprehensive strategy to deal with climate change. It's so important that we support active transportation. You honored Dr. Jane Goodall earlier, and I thought that was beautiful, but I found a quote from her that I really love. She said, "I do believe there is a window of time when we can at least slow down climate change and loss of biodiversity, but only if we get together and take action now. And without hope, we will fall into apathy and do nothing, then we are doomed." So it really is encouraging to see the staff report, which I thought was very good, supporting this initiative, the Greenways Initiative. I wasn't so crazy about the idea of spending all this money on consultants. With nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars, we could install a whole bunch of solar panels and really help people.
Matt Abramson, followed by Diane Kirby, then Jonah Canner.
Good evening, City Council. I'm a seventeen-year resident of Pasadena, and also a member of the Pasadena Athletic Association Cycling Club. I cycle these streets all the time, and they're dangerous out there. It feels like a hazard every time you're out there on the street, that, you know, you're watching your back for a car to come up and possibly be danger to your health. These greenways are really gonna be a way to create a happier and healthy community, and they're also gonna increase mobility. You know, a lot of people talk about going east to west, and I do that all the time in the Pasadena Union Bike Way. We don't go north or south, and that's something that we really only do over at the Rose Bowl, and having this in other parts of the city, I think it's really gonna help bring the city together and having more options for cycling and recreation. The last thing I want to leave you with is, the Union Bike Way has really been a change for me. Regularly, I'm going over to the Rose Bowl after work during rush hour, trying to get east to west, and that opened up a couple of years ago, and it really changed the way I get over there. I can go almost all the way over to the 710 before I have to get off on the city streets, and it makes it ease of mind getting over there, and a much safer way to get and cycle and enjoy the city the way that we should. Thanks.
Thank you. Diane Kirby, followed by Jonah Canner, then Bert Newton, then Ashley Taylor, then Blair Miller.
Well, I'm a real senior here, so...
Well, I'm a real senior here, so I'm going to speak for senior walkers also. But I urge you to not enter into these contracts because we don't have the statistical information that tells us that bike lanes are being utilized for things other than recreational purposes and that road diets really are working and accomplishing what we want. I would urge the Transportation Department to look into synchronization of traffic signals, to look into left-hand arrows, which will protect pedestrians, and also to enhance enforcement of laws, because I'm not knocking the bikers, but to defend drivers, bikers do not stop at stop signs. I know this because I walk every day on Sierra Madre Boulevard. Our bike lane on Sierra Madre Boulevard is not used Monday through Friday, but on the weekends, and every time I walk, there are scads of bicyclists blowing the signals, blowing the stop signs, and that is dangerous for pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonah Canner, followed by Bert Newton, followed by Ashley Taylor, then Blair Miller, then Topher Mathers.
Hi. Good evening, City Council members and staff. Thank you for taking up this item. My name is Jonah Canner. I've worked at Caltech for the past 12 years, and my son rides his bike to school on Sierra Bonita every day, future greenway. Please approve the greenways design and outreach contracts. Look, everyone wants to live on a safe, quiet street. Everyone. Residents always want people to drive slowly in front of their homes. Building safe greenways will address reckless speeding on four neighborhood streets, and so are very popular. In fact, I'm asking you to see the broad support for safer streets. I feel like, over and over and over again, there are people claiming that no one supports safer streets, no one wants to ride a bike, no one cares about safety, but we're right here, and we're showing up, and you're getting hundreds of letters of support, and your residents are coming here to tell you that they want their streets to be safe, that they want their kids to be able to be out in the street, that they want to be able to walk across the street and talk with their neighbors and build community, and these things are helpful for everyone. Thank you for the time tonight. I appreciate it. Please support the greenways.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned, Mr. Canner and the rest of the speakers are now listed as six and seven, so you're taking both of your comments for both items. Go ahead, Mr. Newton.
Yes, so I live in Pasadena. I didn't put that in my email, so I don't know how it got counted, but I live in Pasadena. I've lived in Pasadena since 1991. I've been riding my bike as my main form of transportation, bike riding and walking since about 2003, so over 20 years, 22 years. And I use the Union Bike Lane every day, sometimes multiple times a day. It's not perfect, but I really like it. For the most part, it works really well. That and the Cordova Bike Lane work really well east-west. The only really north-south one that I use with any frequency is the Marengo one, and that tends to give out right when you need it the most, going through the central. So you got it in the south and you got it in the north, but not in the center part of Pasadena. And that's kind of the problem with our biking infrastructure right now, is that it doesn't connect with each other, and it tends to disappear just when you need it the most at intersections. When I talk with people, they're always impressed that I ride a bike every day. Everybody says, "I would do it, but I'm scared to do it." I hear that all the time. People are scared to do it. You know, I don't begrudge people who drive cars, because our city structure, not just Pasadena, everywhere, incentivizes that. But I do take offense at people who want to stop us from having more bike infrastructure. Those of us who bike are not the ones polluting the air.
Your time has expired.
Yeah, so my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. My understanding is Ashley Taylor wants to speak virtually, so we'll call her in a bit. Blair Miller, followed by Topher Mathers, then Deborah Spector, then Erin Salinger. Blair.
Good evening, council members. Blair Miller, resident of Pasadena, speaking on behalf of supporting the contracts for the design and the outreach of the greenways. Greenways are meant to be slower, safer streets with reduced cut-through traffic that will serve as comfortable routes for walking and biking. The four streets planned as greenways, El Malino, Wilson, Sierra Bonita, and Craig, are the four lowest-volume streets that cross the 210 freeway. That makes them a natural choice for walking and biking and essential for our city's network. Yesterday, a bicyclist was struck and badly injured at the intersection of Washington and Los Robles. Thank you, Councilmember Hampton, for following up so promptly on receiving that information. And just today, one of our coalition members witnessed a van that had hit its storefront at Orange Grove and Fair Oaks. It was a single-vehicle crash. This is an important fact that we need to remember. Crashes don't only affect the most vulnerable road users, which is obviously what we are mainly concerned with, but most of Pasadena's crashes impact drivers and passengers. Safe streets will also help people who are traveling by car. They're important for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Topher Mathers, followed by Deborah Spector, then Erin Salinger, then Liz Schiller, then Juan Pablo Vigno. Go ahead, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Hampton. Just joking. The council members. My name is Topher Mathers. I'm a renter, and as a father and husband, I wholeheartedly support the greenways. I urge you to approve the contracts before you tonight, so that we can keep Pasadena moving in a forward, thoughtful, reasonable direction, so we can build a future that is welcoming and safe, improve our city functions, and can actually deliver on the promises it makes, in this case, making our streets safer for everyone, including families and children. I have been an avid supporter of safe streets for a number of years, ever since I was hit while biking in the city, and my commitment has only solidified since becoming a husband and father. My friends and neighbors have seen too many horrific incidents of traffic violence take place in the city. Too many of our neighbors have been killed or been injured by reckless drivers and are outdated, poorly-designed streets. As a father and neighbor, I'm heartened to see the broad and diverse support from our community, who also cares about street safety. As of today, you've received over 160 comments in support of these agenda items. Furthermore, 18 local organizations have endorsed all ages and abilities greenways, including the PUSD School Board, the League of Women Voters, NWCP, the Accessibility and Disability Commission, Environmental Advisory Commission, and the Transportation Advisory Commission, plus over 1,000 people have signed the petition of support and written over 270 comments in support. This shows me, and I hope it shows you, that there is a demand from our community for safe streets, and I urge you to meet this demand by approving these contracts. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Spector, followed by Ellen, sorry, Erin Salinger, then Liz Schiller, Juan Pablo Vigno, and then Thomas Priestley.
Good evening, council members. My name is Deborah Spector. I am a Pasadena resident and have lived in District Seven for seven years. I walk, bike, take bus and rail transit, and drive in Pasadena. I support the contracts, and I want to see all ages and abilities greenways built to create safe neighborhood streets for my friends, neighbors, and community. This past weekend, I ran my errands by bike. I used the Cordova Bike Lane and the Union Street Cycle Track to get to my various stops that I needed to get from Pasadena to Sierra Madre. I spent an inordinate amount of time trying to find the safest and least stressful route for this north-south trip that crosses the 210. There really wasn't one. As was mentioned earlier, the four streets planned as greenways, El Malino, Wilson, Sierra Bonita, and Craig, are the four lowest-volume streets that cross the 210 freeway and are the only north-south bike routes in the city's bicycle plan adopted back in 2015. No one should have to wonder if they have a safe route traveling north or south. We need these four routes to be safe and accessible for all people walking and biking. We won't have a safe network without them. They are a natural choice for safe, low-speed travel. They have been in the plan for 10 years. It's time to get them built. Thank you so much for supporting the greenways.
Erin Salinger, then Liz Schiller, then Juan Pablo Vigno, then Thomas Priestley, then Jesus Molina.
Thank you for having us, you guys. My name's Erin Salinger. This shouldn't matter, but I'm a homeowner on Sierra Bonita. I'm not coming to you guys as a cyclist, although I am one. I'm coming to you as a resident who's concerned. We have 20 children on my block. We sent a letter to our council representative, Cole, with 15 household signatures requesting slower streets. Greenways will protect our most vulnerable street users, including our children, senior citizens, and people with disabilities. These are the people who are injured and killed the most often on our streets. They deserve better, and we can do better as a city. People say that they don't see people using the cycling infrastructure, but frankly, those people just don't see us on the streets at all, and that's what makes it so dangerous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Liz Schiller, then Juan Pablo Vigno, then Thomas Priestley, and then Jesus Molina. Go ahead.
This is Liz Schiller. I happen to be a member of the Accessibility and Disability Commission, although I am speaking as an individual. I want to remind the city council that the commission I sit on transmitted a letter to you in support of all ages and abilities designed for the four greenways. We are all temporarily abled. As we age, we're even more likely to become disabled. People with disabilities often aren't able to drive, not just because of physical limitations, but because we're often low-income, more disproportionately low-income. We're very frequently pedestrians, and sometimes whether or not we drive, we can ride a bike, an e-bike, an analog bike, or an adaptive bike. 25% of Americans have a disability. I hope that you will support these two contracts to protect this large and vulnerable constituency. Thank you.
Thank you. Juan Pablo Vigno, followed by Thomas Priestley, then Jesus Molina, then Matthew Stumbo.
Hello. Good evening. I'm a Pasadena resident. I live here in south Los Robles, and I'm a member of a one-car household. I don't think we could afford two cars, which means that I and my spouse, like, frequently bike to places. And I saw, I've noticed improvements that the city has made. I use very frequently Cordova to go to Caltech, sometimes I use Union, but as many have said, the north-south connectivity of the network is very poor, and in fact, there is no way of crossing the freeway safely. There is no way for our neighbors in the north of the 210 to use these horizontal corridors. So for me, the greenways are just like a perfect solution, because they increase the safety for cyclists and pedestrians without really affecting cars. Because honestly, the only thing that we're doing here is singling out only four streets of the whole city and saying, at least in those streets, cars should drive at a speed that likely won't kill you if they hit you. And in certain sense, it should be a very minimum. Many European cities have implemented a citywide speed limit of roughly 20 miles per hour. For example, Paris, seeing dramatic reductions in fatalities, 23%, Europe-wise, crashes, 28%, injuries, 38%, and noise, air pollution, et cetera. So...
Thank you. Thomas Priestley, then Jose, sorry, Jesus Molina, then Matthew Stumbo, then Julian Romero, and then we'll get to the virtual speakers.
Well, good evening, members of the council. My name is Tom Priestley. I am a resident and homeowner in District Six, and I know that you have been inundated with a huge amount of correspondence related to this project, but if you happen to have seen the comments that I submitted today, I am here to very strongly and very enthusiastically endorse your votes, positive votes, for approval of the contract for the design or for the identification of traffic calming measures and evaluation of those measures for the four proposed greenway streets, and also for hiring a firm to conduct citizen participation related with the development of the greenway projects and also the additional street improvement projects. I might mention very briefly that I have a very strong interest in this area. My mentor was a specialist in this area, and I've been monitoring these things for decades. This is not new. This is, approval of this project will be huge for Pasadena. First of all, in terms of improving the quality of life for those who live on the four streets, and very importantly, for making a significant contribution to the development of a system of protected streets in Pasadena that would allow people who circulate by bike and on foot, you know, better access...
Your time has expired.
Around the city.
Thank you.
So thank you. So I hope, yes, that you will be voting yes on both of those measures.
Jesus Molina, are you here? Great. Then Matthew Stumbo, then Julian Romero, and I think we had one other card, Terry Belling.
Hi, council. I live in District Six. Hi, Councilmember Madison. My name is Jesus Molina. I go by Molo, for future reference. It's a quick note. Before I talk about the greenways, I used to work at the Starbucks in the old Pasadena location. Fortunately, it closed. I used to walk to work, and I loved it a lot, loved the walk. I got transferred to the Hill and Walnut location, so I'll now have the privilege of being able to ride on the Union Street bike path on my way to work. So thank you for that. Thank you for that project, because it means a lot to me. Coming from a household with no vehicle, I'm now able to ride a bike to work safely. About the greenways, I want to emphasize the safety element of this, of the greenways, because the second-largest killer of children is vehicles, the first being guns. When we're talking about safety, these greenways travel along paths with parks and with schools, and with kids in mind, we've got to make sure that we keep these roads safe. Candidly, if I may speak real quick, we're here often. You guys know a lot of us by name, but let's see what the public thinks. We're not using city money for this, for this type of outreach. Let's find out what the public thinks about this.
Thank you. I can testify firsthand, Molo makes a mean latte. And I was bummed to learn that that store had closed. I think it was part of their big closure of a bunch of stores, but I understand most of the associates have been placed at other stores, so I'm grateful for that. Thanks, Molo. Matthew Stumbo, followed by Julian Romero, then Kerry Belling, and then James Al Perry, virtually.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matt Stumbo. I'm a resident of District Four, and I am here today in support of the greenways and urge you to approve both the design and outreach contracts tonight. The greenways are an important project to make four of our streets safer in Pasadena. One of the most common concerns I've heard from residents is about speeding and traffic volumes on neighborhood streets. I've heard these concerns from friends and neighbors. I've heard them voiced at district meetings and in these chambers. I am also concerned about traffic speeds and traffic volumes on our neighborhood streets, not just for my own safety, but for the safety of my four-year-old son and two-month-old daughter, who I want to grow up with the ability to move about Pasadena safely. These concerns are backed by studies which show an increasing amount of speeding and distracted driving in driving behaviors, and these behaviors put every road user, driver, pedestrian, cyclist alike, at risk. The greenways provide an opportunity to address street safety by reducing speeding and traffic volumes on four north-south streets and prioritizing the streets for local residents, pedestrians, and cyclists. Slower speeds can be achieved with basic traffic calming techniques like speed humps or traffic circles. Safety doesn't have to be complicated or expensive. As you consider your vote tonight, remember, all that's being considered is the start of the design and outreach processes. We don't yet know how the greenways will be implemented. Neighbors should be engaged in a conversation to determine how to make our streets safer, and we shouldn't stop the process before it even begins. Please vote yes for design and outreach for greenways. Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Romero, followed by Kerry Belling.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Julian Romero, and I'm here to express my strong support for the greenways project. I live in Pasadena with my wife and two children. My children are in kindergarten and third grade and go to school in Pasadena. My kids ride their bikes to and from school most days, three miles each way. My kids also participate in sports leagues in and around Pasadena, and we regularly bike to practice and games in and around Pasadena. The current biking network in Pasadena has significant gaps. When my family is choosing routes, we are often forced to go far out of the way so that we can stay on streets that are relatively safe for biking. At times, we have no choice but to use unsafe streets, for example, crossing the 210 freeway, which is stressful and dangerous, especially with children. I support efforts that continue to fill in the missing pieces of this network. Providing more transportation options makes the city safer and easier for everyone to navigate. I often talk to other parents who are interested in biking, but understandably don't feel safe on the roads as they are now. Even a modest increase in people biking instead of driving would reduce traffic congestion and parking demand, which would benefit everyone, including drivers. I support efforts that give residents transportation options. Therefore, I am strongly in support of the north-south greenways project, which takes a big step in filling in the bike network and providing safe transportation options for people of all ages. and providing safe transportation options for people of all ages. Thank you for working to make Pasadena a safer and more accessible city for all residents.
Thank you. Kerry Belling. I believe we just got another speaker card for somebody in person.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Kerry Belling. I live in Pasadena. I want to counter a suggestion that we heard from several speakers that people don't ride bikes very much in Pasadena. There's an explanation for why they might have that view because as a bicyclist myself, I know that motorists do not see us. They are not aware. So when they say, well, we don't see any bikes, we know that because that's why we feel unsafe. You're not seeing us. There are a lot of people, thousands of people, ride bikes every day in Pasadena. Most people, however, feel it's unsafe. It's already been mentioned. If we, if the project has the ages and abilities guidelines, it will reduce traffic volume and cut, and cut the, stop the cut-through traffic and bring traffic speeds down to around 20 miles per hour. And if you know from physics, as you go faster, it's, the amount of energy of impact is exponential, not linear. If that makes any sense. More bicycling will free up more parking spaces, make it safer for kids, seniors, disabled folks, and drivers. We've already gone over that. I live in El Molino, near El Molino and Mountain. It's a very narrow street.
Mr. Belling, your time has expired?
All of my time?
Yes.
Oh, I thought I was going to get a warning.
I rang a bell.
Okay, I didn't hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll submit the rest of it.
Thank you. We'll, we can distribute that to the council if you turn it into the Sergeant Arms. Mike Polk. Mike Polk. And then online, we have James Perry, Danielle Moskowitz, Denise Morgas, Kaitlin Wallace, and Ashley Taylor. Those are the last speakers. Go ahead, Mr. Polk.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for letting me speak.
Could you put your, could you, there you go. I couldn't hear you.
Okay. I'm in favor of the greenway. And it does not appear that the city has explored the use of uneven brick streets that were once used in urban streets before the use of concrete asphalt became common on streets. I'm providing a case study that was done in 1996 in Winter Park, Florida, where they varied the thickness of the bricks, two and a half inches to three inches, which, if you've ever experienced an old-style road, it actually creates a little vibration in your car. So instead of a speed bump or a roundabout with a bunch of signs like Avenue 64 and Burleigh has over 35 signs, this will decrease traffic by 29% from 8,500 to 6,000 cars per day with a drop in average of 29 miles per hour instead of 41 miles per hour. Bricking therefore reduces the problem of cut-through traffic from two major highways. The brick streets were such a hit that residents began campaigning for their neighborhoods to have it. And about 25% of the streets are now bricked in Winter Park.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired?
Let me just tell you this one thing. The brick streets raised surrounding property values by 15 to 25%.
Thank you.
And I encourage you to have an exploratory committee go out and visit these sites.
James Alperi, followed by Danielle Moskowitz, then Denise Morgas. Mr. Perry, are you online?
I believe so, but you hear me there?
We can hear you. I will ring a bell when you have 30 seconds. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you all this evening for staying awake long enough to hear this. Several of you have already received quite a few emails and petitions from local residents here at the southmost end of El Molino. Most of the people that I've talked to, including businesses next to, from state Cordova on El Molino, and I'm only here for one issue, and that's the El Molino Green Belt. You can do whatever you want with the rest of them, but essentially, we do not have any information whatsoever over a period of years. And I think you're putting the cart before the horse by setting up your planning when you should be consulting with the residents on El Molino as well as the businesses. So it's essentially a matter of saying, asking you to defer your decisions and tell you at least have feedback from the local people that are going to be affected within, you know, a half a mile of each of these Green Belt areas. My only concern is El Molino, and I'm against it. And so are approximately 26 people that I presented. And that's pretty much it. I will keep it short and sweet and let you make your own decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Danielle Moskowitz, followed by Denise Morgas, then Kaitlin Wallace. Ms. Moskowitz?
Pasadena resident, District 2, adjacent to Craig. The streets are made, are meant for everyone. They should not be reserved as private roads for a select few. As a driver, I'm required to share the road with cyclists as well as runners, motorcyclists, scooter riders, skateboarders, vendors, and panhandlers, all of whom often disregard our traffic laws. What is proposed discriminates against families and their transportation. Yet we are here to divide city streets without sufficient data to support the need and reward an undetermined handful of cyclists over our families. There is absolutely no valid reason for an extensive takeover of Craig Avenue. It is not heavily trafficked route. I can attest to it. I use it every day. Even those in support of the greenways say Craig is not a high-volume street. Yet Craig, reducing it in any manner discriminates against the majority of us who live near Craig and rely on cars for long-distance travel, family transportation, and access to our homes. This route is also a favorite among local residents, providing access to major streets, collector roads, and shopping areas. Craig Greenway is simply not needed. Greenways are designed to slow tracker, traffic and back it up. It does not, it does hinder emergency vehicles trying to navigate through the city, especially during peak hours, putting lives at risk. The fire department even said as much.
Ms. Moskowitz?
We all support the goal of safer streets. I'm sorry, for everyone. However, we need road improvement, more traffic signals, better lighting.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Denise Morgas, followed by Kaitlin Wallace, then Ashley Taylor, and then Thomas Thai, I believe, is here.
Unmute me. I have issues with El Molino as well. I've lived in the area for a long time, and I'm the Jane Goodall of observation of the, the human chimps in my neighborhood who are walking their dogs with their strollers, with their children, running the, by, by taking narrowing El Molino, which is very lightly used by anybody, but by taking it, that's like taking an aorta and putting plaque in it. You're going to be taking the blood of traffic and putting it in arterial routes. Oakland and Madison, which has, between, once you get to Del Mar, California, which are superblocks. It, it makes it very difficult for people to be able to use their streets as walkers. And the people who drive, traffic enforcement, parking enforcement is not enforcing LA County laws. People are parking right up to the stop signs. People are supposed to park 20 feet back from the crosswalks. There aren't any crosswalks. There's hardly any lights on Del Mar with everybody going around. And those, you cannot see the traffic because everybody parks right up there. There could be a bicyclist. You wouldn't even know they're there. So we, if you're going to be doing this.
Thank you, Ms. Morgas.
You need parking enforcement and traffic signals.
Kaitlin Wallace, followed by Ashley Taylor, and then Thomas Thai.
Hi there. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Kaitlin, and I live and work in Pasadena. I love this city, and I want to see all ages and abilities greenways built to create safe neighborhood streets. I ride my bike around Pasadena and regularly think of what a perfect community Pasadena would be for safer streets to walk and bike on. Our compact, quaint community with fabulous Southern California weather could be a pedestrian paradise if safer streets were prioritized. I regularly utilize the Cordova and Union bike lanes, but struggle to find safe ways to ride north and south as many other community members have mentioned. I live near Craig Ave and was really thrilled to hear a greenway is being considered. I bike past Craig almost every morning and rarely see any cars at that intersection and almost never more than one. I've never spoken at a city council meeting before. I'm here today because a flyer was placed on my doorstep actively trying to prevent the greenways. I'm a Pasadena resident, a regular bike commuter, and I wanted to let you all know I believe bike greenways on Molino, Wilson, Sierra, Benita, and Craig would be stellar additions to our city, especially for our community members for whom biking is not a hobby, but their only reliable means of transportation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ashley Taylor, and then Thomas Thai.
Hello, Councilmembers. I live in San Pasquale, zip code 91107. I support the contracts, and I want to see all ages and abilities greenways built to create safe neighborhood streets. Biking makes Pasadena so much more accessible. I'm much more excited to improve my health by taking a bike ride, during which I window shop and am more likely to patronize Pasadena stores because I'm more able to take in surroundings without trying to look for a parking spot on streets that are welcoming to cyclists. Biking and walking through Pasadena makes me feel more connected to my neighborhood and community, and the proposed greenways will reinforce that our streets are more than just a place to pass through. I urge you to support these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Cannavan, and then Thomas Thai. Mr. Cannavan?
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Mike Cannavan. I'm a District 6 resident. I want to speak in favor of moving forward with the greenways project. I myself do not ride a bike in Pasadena, in no small part because it doesn't really feel safe in my neighborhood. But I do walk quite a bit, and I want to support this proposal not only for the sake of Pasadena cyclists who face significant threats and stressors just trying to navigate the city, but for the sake of pedestrians who would also benefit from these improvements. Union and Cordova, for example, which I walk on often, are much safer now for cyclists, pedestrians, and drivers. And I believe it's time to extend similar benefits to much more of our cities with these greenways. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thomas Thai?
Thank you so much. I'll make it short. Thank you for holding out for so long tonight. I think I feel safe in saying all of us have driven or have been driven around this city for many times. And I also feel safe in saying probably most of us are not impressed by the way people drive these days. And it's for that reason that I don't bike a lot, even if I own a bike, because I'm lucky I haven't been run over a few times. You know, we hear a lot about traffic being slowed down by greenways, but I think that's the point. We, we all know people are speeding like crazy. If they're, if the officers sitting here were still here, you probably could pull them, and they would easily tell you everyone's speeding like that. We've tried asking nicely with the speed limits. It doesn't work. The only way to really make people slow down, it seems, is physical barriers like bumps, bulbous, and other things that come with these greenways. You know, we can always take a few, five extra minutes to fight, to drive slower. It's a lot harder to fix injury. It's impossible to fix someone who's been run over or killed when they walk or when they bike. So I urge all of you to follow the hundreds of people who have spoken in favor of these greenways and vote yes on these greenways. Thank you.
Suzanne Madison?
Hello, hello, everyone. Forty-two speakers. I'm Suzanne Madison. I'm a Pasadena resident and founder of Allegra Consulting. I'm speaking to have you guys support local Pasadena businesses. Allegra Consulting is a communications and public engagement firm right here in Pasadena. We've been around for 26 years. Over the years, we've done public outreach and engagement for pretty much every department, including the city manager's office and transportation. Tonight's agenda includes a proposed $970,000 contract for community engagement services. As Pasadena now noted, four Pasadena-based firms originally competed for this work, including Allegra's, before the Department of Transportation recommended an outside firm from Chino Hills. The difference between the top two-scoring firm was only a few points, yet the decision redirects nearly $1 million in taxpayer money leaving Pasadena. Our ask this evening is at the council table, this vote number seven, and review the procurement process and evaluations to ensure that Pasadena-based business and firms receive full and fair consideration. Keeping business local isn't just good economics, it's good governance. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes public comment on this item. Well, we have questions from councilmembers. Councilmember Lyon?
Thank you, Chair. I have just a couple of follow-up questions for Mr. Seicas. One of the comments we heard is that the, that two publications of the Department of Transportation include plans for the greenways. That was news to me. I know that the, that the Bicycle Action Plan includes examples of the kinds of traffic control measures we might look at. But are there any plans for any of these streets so far?
There are no plans, per se. What, what we have in the Bicycle Transportation Action Plan of 2015 was a list of potential treatments, similar to a toolbox, identified intersections. Nothing was ever designed. It's just a list of potential types of enhancements. There was no, there were no plans developed. And in 2015, 2021, when we did the greenways feasibility study, we identified some conceptual layouts, which did include some drawings that were typically plans to show what they could look like. They weren't final design. They were really just conceptual to identify what things would cost and, and what certain treatments could look like. So we didn't go through the whole toolbox. We just selected a handful so we could conduct some initial studies. So no final design plans have ever been developed.
And now we're starting back at, at ground zero with a designer to come up with proposals for these particular streets, correct?
Yes, they'd come up with concepts that we would bring out to the public. They would use those two existing documents as a base, but also look at the entire toolbox for potential treatment so we could get feedback from the residents and businesses to determine what options could be moving forward into an actual design phase.
One of the other things I heard, I didn't hear it tonight, but I have heard it from, from residents around El Molino is that we're talking about diverting 50,000 car trips a day into Madison Heights. Does El Molino process 50,000 car trips a day?
It doesn't. Yeah, I think there was some misinformation on the amount of traffic on that street. Our studies show about 7,000 vehicles on El Molino. Now, post-COVID, it's closer to 5,000, but it doesn't carry 50,000 vehicles.
And then the last thing I wanted to, any plans to, on South El Molino, say just south of Colorado, are you planning to remove lanes of traffic?
No, we're not.
Okay. And planning to get rid of parking?
Not planning on getting rid of parking wholesale. There may be one or two treatments that remove one or two spaces depending on the type of treatment. So if we're putting in, let's say, a curb extension or a median, that may result in the loss of one or two parking spaces or none at all depending on where it's located.
But again, we don't have a plan yet for any of the streets.
No, that would be part of the process.
All of the plans, so the outreach contract, the point of that is to vet all of the plans with the public, get feedback, and try to mitigate concerns as much as we can, correct?
Correct, and identify any potential new enhancements along the corridors that we could also study.
Great. One question about the local business. I talked about this, he's not here now, with Mr. Hawxworth, actually, a couple of weeks ago, but it, so we give credit for a local business, right? We have a certain number of points that we allot for a local business.
Correct, five points.
Right? Is it possible, this is maybe a broader question for you or the city manager, is it possible to increase that, first of all, to increase the preference for local businesses? And also, I wondered if it's possible to, to sort of do it in tiers, because there's something to be said for bringing money to Pasadena, but there's also something to be said for spending money in the greater San Gabriel Valley or in LA County even. So is it, is that a possible, a thing we can do? Or are we really limited to the five-point preference? And I know my friend, Mr. Hampton, is also interested in this local higher issue.
Absolutely. I believe it would take the council to vote on a Cross and Study, which I have asked for multiple times. Unfortunately, we didn't have the support for that at the time, but I do know that we need a study done so that we could show that the city of Pasadena, it costs more to do business here, just be realistic. It just costs more to do business here. And so we'd have to identify that, and then from that study, that's how we could allow more points. In the city of San Francisco, they have, they've done a cross study and they have the ability to say, well, we're going to give first right to San Francisco-based businesses. So San Francisco's not the greatest example of places all the time, but when it comes to doing business locally, I would say that they're doing a pretty good job.
City manager, city attorney, agree that we could, we could change the scoring?
You can change the score.
I mean, not, not pre, not retroactively for this contract, but just in general, we get a lot more points to Pasadena businesses?
Mr. Hampton referenced the Cross and Study. So depending on the results of that, we could make adjustments.
Okay. I would, separate and informally, separately from this matter, like to send that to Economic Development to talk about, because I think we frequently see Pasadena businesses bidding on, on projects and not getting it, often because of the, because of the numbers. And I would love to kind of offset that. I will have some comments, but that was it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cole?
If others have questions, I'll defer, because I too would like to make some comments, but I don't want to preclude others from asking questions.
I don't see anyone else in the queue. Councilmember Cole, you're the only one right now.
Mr. Lyon, do you want to go first?
Sure. Thank you. So I appreciate everyone coming out tonight and all of the written comments. We received a lot, a lot of mail, for people for and against and asking questions, and I tried to respond to everyone in the, in my district who wrote to let you know where I'm coming from on this. I will say, and we heard from a disproportionate number of District Seven residents tonight, I didn't know that there were that many bikers in the district, but I am one of you. I'm interested in this question of when we talk about needing cyclist data. Clearly, people bike, right? We know that people bike. We know that at least three dozen people bike because we heard from them tonight, but I know there are more than that. And so I'm not sure, when I hear that, I'm not sure what the threshold is that we're looking for. How many do we have to have before we accommodate one need in our city? We're talking about setting aside four north-south streets out of 50-something streets, which is a pretty small percentage, less than 10%. And as a city, we have a vested interest in getting people out of their cars. One of the things I'm fascinated about is that people who, who wrote to me objecting to the greenways, one of their biggest concerns was traffic congestion. And this is all a part of the plan to get people out of their cars and to give people options other than cars. And we're not talking about creating a world where people don't drive at all, but we are talking about creating a world where people don't have to drive everywhere, and that is Pasadena's goal, and this is a part of that. So, and we do that in a lot of ways. We widen sidewalks to make, to make streets more inviting for pedestrians, and we try to improve our, our public transportation system to make, to make it easier for people to take a bus around town. And we also try to make it easier for people to cycle around town. I do, it's important to point out that, that greenways are not, these are not bike lane proposals. A lot of people said, I don't like bike lanes. I don't want to lose parking to bike lanes. The idea with a, with a greenway is that the street itself is calm enough that it's safe to bike on, so you don't necessarily need a bike lane. The bike lanes exist on the bigger streets where people, as we heard tonight, don't necessarily feel safe biking. And as, and either way, whether they feel safe on the east-west streets biking, we do not have a comprehensive network of bike lanes. And until we have that, we really won't know how much bike adoption we have. I heard from a lot, a lot of residents and institutions, but I do want to say that PUSD, with its three campuses in my district, support the greenways proposal. PCC, which is in my district, supports the greenways proposal. Caltech, which is in my district, supports the greenways proposal. The Polytechnic School, which is in my district, supports the, the greenways proposal. But more importantly, I was counting very carefully the people I was hearing from, in particular on El Molino. And the residents of El Molino, the majority and who reached out to me were for the greenways proposal. I have heard again and again and again that they, that the residents want traffic calming on the street. I have also heard from residents who do not. But it's clear to me that a critical mass in my district supports the greenways proposal, and consequently, I support it. And so when it is appropriate, I would like to move approval of the staff recommendations on both.
So we're splitting the items.
On, then we'll say for item six, on the, on the greenways, the, the design contract. Thank you.
And there's a second for that motion. We will move, I appreciate your comments. Councilmember Lyon, I feel exact the same way. I had a lot of residents in my district that reached out that were, some on the fence, a lot in favor, and then there were some that were just like absolutely no. A lot of the folks that were absolutely no are the same people who reached out to me about speeds on El Molino. And so I just had mentioned that this was a part of the treatment to try to calm some of those speeds, and most of those folks said, well, I would like to see more of the plan. I said, we don't have a plan yet. So, you know, this is the part, this is the first part. The first step is to get the feedback from the residents so we could put together a good plan. And if it's not a plan that anybody wants, and maybe some of the folks, which I doubt that the folks that are here today say that they absolutely hate the plan and they don't want it anymore, but they might, you know, when we're done with the plan, but I think that this is that piece of the process, so I appreciate your comments. Councilmember Cole?
Councilmember Lyon, Councilmember Hampton, I really appreciate the arguments that you've laid out. I agree with everything both of you have said, so I will not repeat what you've said. That said, I do have some significant concerns about the process going forward. Number one, the folks who we heard from, and they're out there in all of our districts, who are deeply opposed to compromising their ability to get around in their cars, and that's a significant portion of our community, tends to be older, but it is, it is not to be ignored. And I think what we've lacked in this community since the general plan of 1992 is a genuine conversation in which people are talking to each other and not past each other. I genuinely think, and I don't mean any disrespect to those who fervently oppose these things, but I genuinely think it's, it's different when you sit down with someone who wants to bike, when you sit down with a parent of someone who would like their kids to bike to school. And we've often heard from, from folks that we support safety, we just don't want you, the city, to screw up our streets because we need to drive on them. And I think that the lack of that conversation means that these conversations are divisive and polarized in ways that, that I think genuine collaboration can mitigate. There will always be, in a city as diverse as ours, people on one side and people on the other, but I think most people are in the middle. And in fact, I encountered that as I talked to voters during my campaign. Almost all of them said, I hate the reckless speeding on my street, and how come the city is screwing up streets with roundabouts and bike lanes and what have you? And, and that cognitive dissonance, I think, needs to be worked out. This is not a, on us versus them ultimately. And I would just make this one point before going on to where, where I hope we can find common ground. Would anyone say, let's not put in curb ramps because only a few people are disabled? I don't, I don't see anybody using those curb ramps, so let's violate the Americans with Disabilities Act. There are some rights that are irreducible, and our general plan says Pasadena will be a city where people can circulate without cars, and it should say safely without cars. It really, I think it is important to have data, and I agree with our former transportation commissioner, data is important. But ultimately, I think that we haven't confronted the basic civil right here of people to be able to get around in their community if they're disabled, if they're elderly, if they're too young to drive, or if they simply choose or have economic circumstances. I think there's an irreducible right here. Here's my concern, and I'll, I'll be talking about this on item seven. I do not want this to be designed by public shouting. I think that the flaws in the Union Street design, which drove up the cost dramatically, are the result of us trying to figure out with a group of people, some who are opposed, some who are supportive, some who have their own ideas, some who love roundabouts, some who hate roundabouts, some who have ideas from another city, some who, you know. Ultimately, I think the professionals need to understand what do the community want, and we need a good professional design to get there. And I, and I don't want a plebiscite on, you know, should we do a stop sign here or if, if it's just on people's opinion and not on data and not on experience, and we end up with a camel, which I think Union Street is. And I think the roundabout on Hill Street is, is flawed too. We had to slow down Hill Street traffic, but designed by community committee is different from actually, what are we looking for and can we agree on what that is, and then look at some of the, the options. I don't mean the community should be shut out from having opinions, but in the end, we shouldn't just decide that, well, we have 17 people that are in favor of this and four people in favor of that, so the 17 have it. I think we, we need to hold the consultants and our own staff accountable for something that will work. And finally, my big concern is, even if this, this project goes forward, we're not going to have, with, with $10 million left, we're not going to be able to do greenways on all four streets their entire length. And so we have $400 million of traffic safety unfunded projects in our capital project. And I think what we've heard over and over again from the critics is, and from the supporters, is we need a citywide network. It's impossible to judge safety on the basis of a project here or a project there. This project gets shot down, this project gets completed, this project gets done in a way that's far from ideal. We need a citywide commitment of political will and funding to create a citywide network that makes it safe for everybody to get around in our city. And I think absent that conversation, I worry about a war for the next year between those who are adamantly opposed and those who are fervently supportive, and then we end up with a, with a camel project, and then people say, see, you know, this stuff doesn't work. We need to be committed over the long haul to funding a citywide network. And, and so I would like us to enter into this in spirit of trying to, to think beyond just these four streets. And therefore, I would strongly suggest that our Transportation Advisory Commission play a key role here to give a citywide perspective of people who we have appointed, who we have confidence in, who have transportation expertise, and that this not just be a project for four neighborhoods. And so that's my proposal on item six, is that we explicitly incorporate a role for the Transportation Advisory Commission to oversee this project in the context of trying to build a citywide commitment to traffic safety and putting this in the context of that citywide strategy.
Thank you. Councilmember Madison?
I have my own reaction to that, but I'd be curious instead to, and staff's reaction to that.
I guess my only concern with that would be oversee. I think certainly consult, get recommendations from, present it to the council.
That's what I mean.
Okay, that's what you meant? Yep.
If I gave a different impression, I didn't mean to.
Thank you.
That was our, I was under the assumption that that was already in the plan to have TAC look at the plan or hear updates on this.
They are part of the process. The Advisory Commission is part of the process. There's also a community advisory group that's part of the process. What we can definitely do is just make sure it's explicit that, that, that TAC is part of that process.
I would hope that the TAC could contribute to the design of this project, to the design of the process for the project is, is what I mean, and make sure that we all along the way are keeping in mind the citywide implications.
Yeah, I'm understanding to be to get that citywide view, but I also heard earlier on the military equipment, a desire to have the reports that we provide to you all include a description of what those groups are recommending or saying or whatever input, so we can be better about giving you that information so it's considered here.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Madison?
No, I appreciate that. My, my understanding was also that, that TAC is well aware and involved in these initiatives. But we only have five votes here, so is that, if I could inquire, Mr. Cole, if that's a second with an explanation, as they say in court, or will, or will we be able to?
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. I understood it.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
The second was Mr. Masuda.
Okay.
So it was Mr. Lyon who made the motion and seconded by Mr. Masuda.
And I, so then I would just inquire if Mr. Cole's prepared to support with those clarifications or not, because if not, this will be a short discussion.
No, no, I, I absolutely support this. I'm, I'm hoping that it is the, the spirit of my colleagues and the staff that, that my urging that the, the TAC play a key role here is part of this, but I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, I think, you know, my reaction too is that much of what we do is iterative, right? Because it just is, right? We can't wait until all the other pieces are in place, and this is, it goes in every direction, you know? We need more motorcycle officers in this city. If we doubled the number of motorcycle officers we have, we still wouldn't be fully staffed, and it would help address all of these problems. And I chuckled at the comments because in my district, we get complaints about speeding, and so we have extra motor patrol, and then the same people who complain get the citations and say, well, I wasn't talking about us. It's those other people, you know? So these are complicated problems. I intend to support the motion, and I think this has to be part of us leaning into the climate crisis as well. And, you know, I have a concern about electric vehicles because generally, they're quieter, right? And so that could enhance the safety or exacerbate the safety risks. So I don't know what the challenge is. I know some of the manufacturers actually create noise that isn't otherwise there. You're nodding, Mr. Seicas, but I think, so that's a challenge. And I don't know any other way other than the outreach that item seven calls for to have a process that results. I mean, I get the camel thing. You know, Steve Jobs used to say that he doesn't care what the people think because they don't know what they want until he builds it. You know, if Henry Ford had been asked, had asked, you know, done a market survey, then it would have come back, we want a better horse. But instead, he figured out an even better solution. Obviously, in government, we can't operate like that, so I'm intrigued by the idea that there's a way of, of leading that doesn't involve, you know, that shouting match. Hopefully, that's, goes to the tone as well as the substance. But I also just wanted to note that it's, to me, it's poignant that there were so many District Seven representatives here tonight because Sid Tyler, your predecessor, lost his life while riding a bicycle, you know, in the district. So anyway, I'm going to support the motion and look forward to the discussion continuing. I do have a concern that this is Measure Our Funding, and we do have a lot of needs for that funding, and I want to make sure that we're also, when And I want to make sure that we're also, when in this iterative process, it shouldn't be the projects that came up first are the ones that get priority. So, but my sense is this fits into the overall package of what we think is possible with that funding. So I'd ask you to bear that in mind going forward, too. Thank you.
So we call the question on the vote. I think we will do a roll call vote, just because there's only five of us.
And it's the, to approve the staff recommendation with?
Item six.
Right. With the comments made by Councilmember Cole. Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones is absent due to recusal. Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rebus is absent due to recusal, as is Mayor Gordo. The motion passes. Five in favor, none against. unanimously approved.
Perfect.
So I laid the groundwork in discussing the substance of item six, but I'm deeply concerned about item seven on two fronts. The first is something I have talked about as each of these outreach contracts has come before us. I think we're wasting money. And I don't mean the Department of Transportation. I don't mean this contract. I mean, holistically, we had an outreach consultant for the 710 stub. We had outreach consultants for preparing the specific plans. I believe we, I don't think it's come to us yet, but I believe we have a consultant for the environmental justice element of the general plan, which is required by state law, that will have its own public outreach consultant. PWP, during my nine months on the council, has come to us for marketing consultants and outreach consultants. And this contractor, you know, worked on the Union Street, which I think was less than ideal. And we have something like 17 communications and outreach specialists embedded in our city, across library, parks and rec, the utility, police, fire, and we have a centralized. Now, we heard that this contract will coordinate with our central, but we are competing with ourselves. And we hire these consultants from out of town, and they learn our community, and they learn how to work our community, and they build up their list of people that are interested in this particular topic, and then they leave. And there's no continuity, and there's no learning that takes place that can be applied to the next, to the next. I don't know whether this should be done in-house, or whether we should have a master contract with a local firm to build that. It could even be a local nonprofit, as we partner with, for example, Day One on Walktober. But I think that just these one-offs are not an efficient use of our dollars, and particularly on a topic as sensitive as this one will be, to bring in yet another firm from outside the city, to come in and figure out how to learn who the NAACP is, and who are the Latino leaders in our community, and understand the difference, you know, how to reach homeowners versus renters, understand some of the differences between Mr. Madison's neighborhood and Mr. Hampton's neighborhood. All of these things, I think we should be building up that muscle memory, that capacity, because it's critically important. And fundamentally, I think the mistake we make is we treat our customers as customers instead of citizens. We ask them their opinions instead of asking them to roll up their sleeves and help us work together to find common ground and to solve problems. We send out surveys, you know, do you want ice cream and Coca-Cola and get it for free? Absolutely, we do. Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. We don't ask them to make the hard trade-offs of talking to people who don't agree with them, people from different parts of the community, people who are radically different in their economic circumstances, to actually talk with each other and learn from each other and build one Pasadena, so that we're not just relying on people who squawk, or who are vocal, or who are the in-crowd, but we really engage the 140,000 people who own this community. It's not the aid of us. And I think that we're going down this road of checking the box of public participation without the reality of really building a model of democracy at the local level. So I'm going to oppose approving this contract tonight.
Well, then, I would suggest, I would suggest that we table this, and I had a couple questions about the contract as well, as related to the scores, how it went out, was it RFP, was it RFQ? It sounded like it wasn't lowest bid. So I had a series of questions about the process and how we got to this point. I appreciate Councilmember Cole's conversation or dialogue this evening about how we hire these companies, and then they reach out to us, and they want to be introduced to all these other organizations as if we don't have anything else to do, or the city doesn't have anything else to do, and we hired them to do outreach, but now they're reaching out to you to figure out who they should outreach out to. I think that's why it's extremely important, and I appreciate Councilmember Cole's comments this evening, to identify firms that have a relationship. That should be, I mean, because you could qualify anything. I mean, the only thing you can't qualify is, at this time, is we can't give extra preference to Pasadena businesses. But if we had a qualification and the scoring that said, okay, what's your experience? I'm sure experience is part of one, I mean, that's probably one, but who are you connected to, what organizations support, et cetera? That would be super helpful with being able to communicate effectively with the residents in Pasadena versus, and no offense to the organization that was selected by staff, I'm sure they're a great organization, but I still receive emails from residents saying that lived along Union, that were like, I remember this being approved, and then all of a sudden it came. And there was no extra communication. So I don't know if the, I don't know if that was a communication issue or a department issue. I really don't know where it dropped, but it's best to have a communication and marketing group that will stay connected. And if they're working on other projects, whether it be Health Department, et cetera, they already have a group of folks that they've been speaking to that are right here within our community. And it gives our community, whatever their issue is, the opportunity to weigh in on all issues. And so I think that's important for me as one council member. But I think one thing that we do have to see is the criteria, and I don't think tonight would be the night to go over each and every one of the criterions, and who was on the committee, neither here nor there. It's really up to the discretion of the council, who they would like to select to execute this contract. And I don't know all of the companies. So I see Councilmember Madison is in the queue, and I see that there are now more people in the queue. So Councilmember Madison.
So I guess one question of staff is, is this outreach that's contemplated by this recommendation required by the funding stream, or any other revision that applies here?
Outreach is definitely required, not only through the funding stream, but also from the standpoint of just how we want this to proceed. There's, the intention of putting six projects under one contract was to be able to get that larger community support of having a cohesive look and having a consultant that will build within the city. It's, you know, this is a, up to a five-year contract because of the various design components and the various.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're following my question, and I take responsibility for that. Is it required? Because I want to make sure that blocking the outreach engagement isn't a way of actually blocking the projects. That's my concern.
Outreach is required. Awarding this specific contract tonight is not required.
Stick with me on the first point. Outreach is required by what?
By both the funding agency and by our own process for determining.
So blocking and saying, instead of doing the 45 meetings of outreach to the community that the staff recommendation would have, we should go enroll 140,000 residents to be part of building a cohesive Pasadena means we block these projects from going forward?
How the outreach is conducted is not, what's the word I'm looking for, is not prescriptive, but outreach is required. So whether it's these, I think, 20 meetings specific to the greenways, 45 meetings total, those are based on the way staff would like to move forward with outreach to be really the most inclusive we can be. That's why this is such an important outreach contract. Whether those meetings are at one location or are larger and include more residents, that's not prescribed.
Right. So, well, I'm going to move the staff recommendation, and I don't think it's perfect either. But I'm concerned, because they're important projects here, and you're representing to me that we have to do the outreach to be able to realize those projects. This funding isn't going to be sitting there forever. And I think, you know, we're both letting the perfect be the enemy of the good if we block these projects with a greater, you know, vision of some different way of capturing the community's input. And we're also sort of flooding the outreach by saying, yeah, great idea to have 45 meetings, but let's involve every single person. A lot of the folks in Pasadena are too busy, you know, putting food on the table, working multiple jobs, getting their kids educated, and they depend on us to, you know, guide the ship, if you will, in the right direction. That's why they elected us. So I'm all ears when it comes to improvements. There's always room for improvement, and maybe there's a way to move forward with this contract. And I would just, you know, because Madison is a commissioner of mine, I know firsthand the quality of her work. I could imagine that there are expertise-specific firms that might be chosen over a local firm, but I agree, we should look at giving local firms more weight in terms of, you know, keeping the jobs and the revenue here. And I guess one would imagine that if you're here, you're closer to the heartbeat of the community, right? The pulse of the community. But I'm really concerned about letting this get away from us. We're doing that with too many projects right now in Pasadena. We're in the fourth year of fee title ownership of the 710 stub, and we don't have a vision, we don't have a plan, we don't have land use, we don't have a financing model, we got nothing. We're in the third or fourth year of owning a blighted property at the corner of Orange Grove and Villa, and we don't have anything yet to offer the community for that investment. So we can't let this sort of, you know, flooding of the issues block these projects. But if there's some improvement that could be suggested tonight to allow us to move forward, great. But, I mean, what will you do as staff if we don't approve the outreach for these important projects?
If this contract is not approved, we have a couple options. We could go out and rebid this to see, well, we'd have to find out why it's not approved and determine what the next step would be, but it would be a significant delay to the project to, after going through the RFP process, the selection process, and the award, not to award a contract. So we'd have to start over on our outreach model, and that could add significantly.
Did I hear that the money will, you know, has a specific timeframe in which it's available?
It does.
And what is that timeframe?
Through the end of construction. So we have about a five-year period to complete this design. We want to get the, I'm sorry, complete the construction of the projects. We want to get through the initial design phase, so we can determine what to design. So it's the identification of those.
So you're saying that the timeframe applies to the overall completion of the projects, not to this trench or this phase?
Correct. The funding was awarded through the end of construction, but anything we do in the front end to slow this down will push out that construction date.
Are there federal dollars involved, or is this purely local?
Purely local.
Sure are. Okay. And Madam City Attorney, this one seems so much broader than the, just the greenways, because it's got the five other projects, too. And it's your professional opinion that the FPPC would find that almost half this council can't participate?
Not with respect to all of them, but since they were all together in this one agenda item, that would apply. If we come back and they're, you know, they're segregated, and there's one for the one that they have a conflict on, and then there's three others, or whatever the other number is, then they can participate in those others. But the way it was put together, the way it was bid, proposed, the RFP, et cetera, they were all combined.
Well, I would suggest that we plan on bringing back the other five in terms of the outreach and getting everyone's input on that, so that, you know, the only project that's blocked is the Greenways project that we already approved, which would be really unfortunate.
I'm not sure I understood that. I'm trying to absorb. So your suggestion was to do what?
To decouple the greenways from the other five projects and bring those back so that we have a full council that can vote on them.
So the proposal, the RFP, would be different from what it was?
Yeah, I think we'd have to go through a new RFP process in order to bring back.
Let the lawyers figure that out. I'm not convinced that all six couldn't be voted on by a full council. I think now we're really reaching the point of absurdity, and maybe we have time.
And I wasn't saying that. I was saying, I think they can participate in those other five.
No, I'm saying all six.
I understand.
Yeah. And perhaps, and I know that you tend to be very protective and conservative in your judgment, and we value that, but maybe we would have time, if we did bring it back, to check in with the FPPC.
That's correct.
Get an opinion, something like that.
Yes.
Councilmember Cole?
And I did make a motion, sorry, I did make a motion. I haven't heard a second yet, but.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion, Mr. Madison. I listened carefully to Mr. Madison's concerns and arguments, and I appreciate them. And it is not my goal to block this project at all. And so I want to put that to rest, Mr. Madison. My frustration is that at some point, I believe we need to change, and I think I would like it to be now, but, you know, I'm one vote. The reality is, I think, and I think you mischaracterized my comments, Mr. Madison, but let me explain them, so I can clarify them if you misunderstood me. I am not suggesting that 140,000 people have to weigh in on every single matter that we discuss, on important matters that come before us. What I'm suggesting, though, is that starting from scratch on this project, the Columbia Street project, starting from scratch on the Union Street project, starting from scratch on the 710 project, starting from scratch on the North Lakes Pacific Plan, starting from scratch on the East Colorado, and I could go on, is wasteful of the time of our community, it's wasteful of our resources. And what I want to see is a shift to a more holistic, ongoing engagement with our public by all our departments working together. There are people who will listen to the police because they're part of a neighborhood watch program. There are people who listen to the fire department because they're part of an emergency preparedness group and training. There are people who serve, who go to our library, and that's how they find out about what's going in in our community. And I don't think we take advantage of that synergy. Can you pull up slide 17, Mr. Seikas? Can you pull up Slide 17, Mr. Seicas? We're having a hard time getting to 17. Speak with a single city voice to enable consistency in branding and engagement approach for all projects. Provide robust and effective community engagement services that will include, et cetera. Provide centralized staff support for public engagement. This is exactly what I want. But I think, and this is no shade on our Department of Transportation. This is really, Mr. Marquez, I'm asking you as the city manager, to address the need to do this. To speak with a single city voice to enable consistency in branding and engagement in a project, not just for all DOT projects, but for all projects. To provide robust and effective community engagement services, not just for these six projects, but for what we do as a city. To provide centralized staff support for public engagement, not just for DOT projects, but for rebuilding our library, you know, et cetera. That's what I'm asking for. And I will, in respect to my colleague's concern about stopping this, I will, I will withdraw my, my decision to vote no. But I, I would ask that we give serious consideration to a different approach. I don't want to see another million-dollar contract to another firm, starting from scratch, to just focus on one part. I want to see this that's articulated, but it's articulated for one department. I want to see it for our city. And I think we will get a lot of those people that Mr. Madison eloquently addressed who are busy and who do have children to raise and who do have jobs to do, to be able to feel like they're, they're actually can participate in making the important decisions that affect their lives. So, Mr. Madison, you, you know, one of the things I admire about my colleague to my right is his ability to change his mind. And you've changed my mind, but, but I do, you have not changed my mind about the need for centralized communication in our city. That I will be dogged on from now on.
May I just, since a lot of those comments were directed directly to me, I really appreciate moving forward, making forward progress. And I would say for me, that sounds like a fairly ambitious restructuring of how we do business, which maybe Mr. Cole would even agree with. And so I'm not sure a specific important project or set of projects is, is the right inflection point. It sounds like perhaps working with staff, bringing forward a broader discussion where we've got all, more departments and all the rest. I want to be clear, I'm from Missouri on that. You'd have to show me that it isn't a good model to have clusters of persons who have interest weighing in on different types of projects. I think it's sort of natural. But I'm all ears and there is always room for improvement, to be sure. Thank you.
Mr. Lyon?
Thank you, Councilman Lyon. I will be brief. I thought I was going to have to try to win my colleague over, but I appreciate your thoughtful comments. I do, I, this contract feels particularly important to me because the, the one thing it's felt important to promise everyone in my district who has come in about this, wherever they are on this, is that we'll have a robust public dialogue about it and try to come to a place, I know we're not talking about the least common denominator of solutions, which is always a worry when, when a bunch of people are in the kitchen. But, I just mixed metaphors. But it, and then distracted myself. But we, I do need to make sure that we're hearing from everyone. And I, and I think there is more agreement than we might know because people on both sides have said to me, you know, I don't love the roundabouts on Glen Arm. I talk about them all the time. And many people have said to me, I don't get the roundabouts on Glen Arm. Many people tonight talked about all the signage on Avenue 64, which is incredibly confusing. So there are many points of agreement on what we're doing, but it's important that everyone has a chance to weigh in. And this contract feels important. I do think there's an important conversation to be had about whether we should think differently about community dialogue as a city. And I'm looking more to the city manager because it's, it, we do treat it as a very transactional process where we, we're, let's have a conversation about this one thing. But I, and maybe we need to do that for certain things, but I do think there's room for us to be having an ongoing dialogue with the city that's more effective than the one we're having now. And so I would, I would support having that, that conversation, but I'm grateful that we can move forward with this contract tonight so that we can move this process forward. Thanks.
City Manager?
Thank you, Chair Hampton. Yeah, I think a couple of things I strongly agree with is there's always room to improve. And I heard that and we know that and we're going to keep looking at that. I think with respect to this contract, it sounds like a big number, 970,000, almost a million dollars. But as Director Seicas noted, it's for five years. It's going to be public engagement, a ton of meetings, not just on the design, but on the construction itself. So that breaks down to about less than $200,000 a year, which is roughly one FTE when you add in the roll-up costs for some person. And I don't know the exact number, but you mentioned 17 FTE that work on public information and engagement. That's, you know, they're decentralized throughout the department, so they have expertise, but we have it centered led by Lisa Dardarian, who I think you all know because we work so much with her. We can keep looking at the model that we use. You know, I want to emphasize, we're talking essentially through this contract over five years, one or one and a half or one and a quarter FTE. But we got the other 17. And someone else made the point, I think you made it, Mr. Cole, all, you want all the departments working together. That's a work in progress. I agree with you. We do so much work better when we're working together cohesively, when we have one voice. All the things that were listed in the PowerPoint, I think are spot on. And again, we will always, there's always room to improve and we'll keep looking at that and look forward to any discussion and direction you all would like to give on how we do the important work of public engagement. It's a tough one because, you know, the thoughts that came into my head immediately was people are working all the time to make ends meet. They don't have time. The people that can come here, we're blessed to have them. But that's not everybody. And I think, Mr. Cole, you and I have had discussions about that. It's a tough nut to crack and we'll keep at it.
Do we have a motion in a second? Should we call the question?
To approve the staff recommendation, Councilmember Cole?
Yes.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones is absent due to recusal. Councilmember Lyon?
Yes.
Councilmember Madison?
Yes.
Councilmember Masuda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reavis is absent due to recusal. Mayor Gordo is absent due to recusal. Unanimously is approved 5 to 0.
That was a great discussion. And I know that the Transportation Department and other departments have probably, and our city manager will be relaying that message over to them, that we need to figure out a way to centralize our communication and try to utilize those that are right here that are already doing this. So I appreciate that. Thank you. We will.
May I just, one thing before we do the adjournments?
Yes.
Acting Mayor, I guess, I looked at some correspondence and it looks like the police and retirement, Pasadena Fire and Police Retirement System has agendized the divestment question for October 15. And I want to make sure we're pushing that information out. The correspondence indicates that, that they are getting public comment, which would indicate that the word is out. But I think it would serve all of us well as we get this request over and over. And to my knowledge, we don't have investments in those companies. I could be wrong. But they really need to take the case to the retirement board. It'd be good to push out that information about that board meeting. I may never hear from the members of the board again. They won't be my friends anymore for doing that. But if, if staff agrees, I'd love to see that happen.
Mr. Madison and colleagues?
Councilmember Cole?
I will tell you, unfortunately, the chair of the committee insisted that we agendize whether to agendize the topic. And so we will have a discussion. I asked for a special meeting because 10:15 in the morning on a, on a, on a workday is not ideal for the public. And so that will be, the discussion is whether we shall agendize that on October 16. There will be a subsequent actual substantive discussion. This is on process. But it's important that people know about it.
Yeah, I think it's.
I appreciate you raising it.
It is this subject matter, so people will have an opportunity to make public comment, presumably, and express themselves. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussions or I know that we have a public comment or I believe Nat?
Nat, are you, did you wait, did you wait to the end because the mayor had invited you? Oh, so not a public comment? Okay, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
So then, yeah, just.
Then we will adjourn our meeting this evening in Dr. Jane Goodall's name as well as Sidney Kirkpatrick.